Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. And welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. Bienvenue à la Council meeting for the 23th of February 22. This meeting will be held through electronic participation in accordance with Section 238 of the Municipal Act as amended by the COVID-19 Recovery and Economic Recovery Act 2020. For those who are able to, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Merci. A roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Lulov.
Je suis présent.
Counselor Dudas. Counselor Harder.
Here.
Counselor Currie.
Here.
Counselor Alshantiri.
Present.
Counselor Gower.
Here.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli. Counselor Egley. Counselor Deans.
Here.
Counselor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
Bonjour.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor McKenney.
Present.
Counselor Leeper.
Good morning.
Counselor Brockington.
Here.
Counselor Menard.
Here.
Conseil Cloutier.
Present.
Counselor Kits.
Ici.
Counselor DeRus.
I'm here.
Counselor Moffett. Counselor Miham.
Here.
Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le quorum est à tient Monsieur le maire.
Merci beaucoup.
You have quorum.
Confirmation of minutes adopted on the process of vote for the 7th of February and the 9th of February 2022. Carrie?
Carrie.
Declaration of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt. Communications is presented. Regrets, Counselor Dudas advised she'll be absent from the City Council meeting of February 23rd, 2022. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pour ta présentation de rapports. Conseil Cloutier, souple, et Conseil Kits.
Merci, Monsieur Maire. That the deferred report from the Finance and Economic Development Committee entitled "The waiver of real property policy and transfer of previously declared surplus land" part of 3380 Jock Vale Road. The report from Community and Social Services entitled "Accountability agreements with Ontario Health" and the report from the City Clerk entitled "Summary of oral and written public submissions for items subject to the Planning Act." Explanation requirements at the City Council meeting of February 9th, 2022 be received and considered. Et que le Conseil reçoive et examine le rapport 24A. And that council receive and consider Built Heritage Subcommittee Report 24A and waive the requirement for planning committee to consider the item application for new construction at 480 Cloverdale Road, a property designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District, so that council may consider the item prior to the expiry of the legislative timeline under the Ontario Heritage Act on February 28, 2022.
Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. A lot has gone on in our city since we last met a week ago. On Friday, officers from police forces from across the country mobilized and led a complex multi-day operation to reclaim control of our streets and our city. It was a very successful operation from our women and men in uniform who conducted with precision, restraint, and professionalism under very difficult circumstances and extreme weather conditions. Grâce à leur travail, nous avons finalement repris le contrôle de nos...
Thanks to their work, we took back our cities, our streets.
Ontario, of course, our police service, the OPP, Hamilton, Belleville, London, Peel, Waterloo, Toronto, Halton, York, Durham, Bradford, St. Thomas, Kingston, Cornwall, Guelph, and Sudbury. And from across Canada, the RCMP, le Police de Gazinot, les Cercités du Québec, Vancouver, Calgary, Edmonton, Saskatoon, and Regina. These brave officers all answered our call to help to bring the illegal occupation of our city to an end. On behalf of the City Council and all of our residents, I want to thank them for their service to our community. Merci à vous tous.
Thank you to all who came in this part of Canada to help us take control of our community.
A particular shout out to three commanders who successfully led and executed at this operation. Interim Chief Steve Bell of the Ottawa Police Service, OPP Deputy Commissioner Chris Harkins, and RCMP Deputy Commissioner Mike Duham. Throughout this entire operation, these three leaders inspired confidence in both their officers and the public, and they established the gold standard for policing in Canada. This mission would not have been possible without the sort of the support of many city services that were called upon to help out. The public works crews that carried out extensive street closures and are now making sure our streets are cleaned up. The transit operators who drove hundreds of officers on location during the course of the operation. The emergency services and their leadership, the Emergency Operations Centre and their delivery of logistical support for this operation. The many paramedics and firefighters who found themselves embedded within public order units to provide medical and fire protection response. The IT and corporate radio teams who delivered critical telecom support, including 500 new radios to support the police operation. And our bylaw officers who worked tirelessly over many, many weeks. Merci à ces centaines d'employés qui ont été mobilisés.
Thank you to these hundreds of employees who were mobilized for this operation.
Very hard on our city and our residents, and although we remain vigilant, the worst, I believe, is behind us. Now begins the difficult work of healing from that crisis. We need to reclaim our normal daily lives and rediscover the beauty and the joy of living in this great city we all call home. Businesses already dealt a blow by COVID were hanging on by a thread during these last few weeks, while residents in other parts of the city were encouraged to avoid downtown out of concern for their safety. We now have to change that, and I'm proud of the package of business support measures we're putting forward today to help our impacted businesses emerge from the crisis. I want to thank city staff, in particular Wendy Stephenson and all our staff from OC Transport and Messy Gravel in my office, and many councillors who are moving and seconding these motions for their cooperative approach at getting these to the floor today. Also want to thank Counselor Leeper, who invited a number of us to go and join him and other councillors for lunch yesterday in the downtown core. This is our opportunity once again to encourage members of the public to buy local and eat local in our establishments, particularly in Somerset Ward and Rideau Vanier Ward, who were the hardest hit as a result of the blockade. I think these measures that will be discussed in a few moments will go a long way in providing some relief and attracting customers to come back downtown to support their favorite restaurants and shops. We will continue to push the federal and provincial government for increased funding for both businesses who have suffered and individuals who have lost their job or lost dozens or hundreds of hours of work. Les mesures que nous mettons de l'avant aujourd'hui...
The measure put forward today will help our businesses to get out of this crisis.
Who have worked together to bring forward these initiatives, and I hope we can achieve a unified support, show of support today for our business community, who, as we all know, have suffered greatly, first with COVID, then the lockdowns, and then the occupation. I want to thank Steve Katalakis, our city manager, for his leadership and steady hand during this crisis. And we're now going to hear an update from Steve on the city's response to the legal occupation and councillor's questions. I'll then ask councillors who have other motions in additions to the ones that have been presented to the clerk to bring them to our attention so they can be considered and debated at that time. Mr. Katalakis, the floor is yours. Merci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, councillor. Good morning, everyone. I want to start by recognizing the tremendous efforts of so many people who took time away for their families and loved ones over the course of the long weekend to help restore our downtown core. It goes without saying that this was a massive undertaking that required the commitments of thousands of individuals working in very difficult conditions to get our streets back to the residents of Ottawa. I want to thank everyone, including City of Ottawa staff, who made many personal sacrifices and have been working around the clock for the greater good of our community and our city. As a result of the exceptional enforcement operation led by the Ottawa Police Service last weekend and its policing partners, our downtown cores in the process of returning to normal, but we're not there yet. On Monday afternoon, OPS announced that they further reduced the size of the secured area that now includes Laurie Avenue to Parliament Hill and Bronson Avenue to the Rideau Canal. In addition, Spark Street is now accessible to pedestrians through gated access at all intersections except Elgin Street, and the 417 off-ramp closures from Rochester to Riverside have been lifted. City staff were day and night to support police efforts this weekend that included fencing and barricade installations, bylaw enforcement activities, snow clearing operations, bus transportation, paramedic fire and traffic support services, at-risk population support, and debris and hazardous waste material, to name a few. Most city services facilities that were closed as a result of the protests have reopened, including City Hall, vaccination clinics, and the main library branch. Our in-person counter services at City Hall for Service Ottawa and Building Code Services will reopen tomorrow. Old Train Line One service was fully restored on Monday from Tunney's Pasture to Blair Stations. Bus routes with service downtown have updated existing detours to bring transit services closer to Centertown, Lower Town, and downtown residents and businesses. OC Transport continues to monitor and will adjust service as the situation evolves, including when OPS further reduces the size of the secured area. On Sunday, OC Transport started their no-charge service for 15 bus routes serving downtown, as well as pair of transport trips to and from Rideau Vanier and Somerset Wards. This will be in place until 30 days after the city's state of emergency is lifted. Our bylaw and regulatory services have issued over 3,700 tickets since the beginning of the protests. We don't have an exact cost of the cost of the, what we spent so far in the protests, but we anticipate that the cost will be close to $30 million, in which we'll be seeking funding from the federal and provincial governments. We expect to have those numbers at some point next week, which we'll share with council and with our federal and provincial partners. We've been asked to determine whether the city can sell seized vehicles to help recoup some of the costs associated with the occupation. I've directed the city solicitor to explore whether there are legal options the municipality can take pertaining to these vehicles, and will be reporting on these findings as soon as they're available. In terms of cleaning efforts, cleanup efforts, city staff has supported police since Friday evening to remove debris and clear snow quickly and efficiently from areas that they previously couldn't access. We're hearing very positive feedback and comments from residents and the community on these exceptional cleanup efforts. So far, 10 25-metre waste bins have been filled with garbage collected from the streets, and will likely have another three or four bins from Coventry Road location by the end of the day today. We're also assured, and we also ensure that any fuel left by the protesters was safely collected and disposed of. While the city continues to support the ongoing police operations, staff are also working on plans to promote the support of the downtown businesses and promote awareness about the negative impact of racism, antisemitism, xenophobia as part of the anti-racism strategy. We're starting to look at how to support the community with the process of healing and what local organizations can help support this. We're actively having discussions. We know many people in our community are hurting, and we're committed to work with Ottawa Public Health and other community agencies to help those who are struggling. In terms of next steps, the Emergency Operations Centre will remain activated in line with police requirements. We'll continue to closely monitor the situation and will be prepared to ramp up support for the coming weekend if required. There are reports of encampments outside the city. There was also a report of one in Greeley, south of Ottawa. That encampment has been dismantled. It's no longer there. Police are tracking all protesters in encampments outside the city. And I can assure you, and I have that assurance from Interim Chief Bell, that police are prepared, as is the city, to respond to any attempt to reconvene the protests or to enter the city again with immediately putting up roadblocks and immediately calling out the up level of staffing that we've maintained through the week and will retain into next week, should the need arise. So I want to assure the community that the staffing levels are still here to be able to respond to any potential threat that may be coming back because these protesters wish to return to downtown. But we don't have any information at this point that that's going to happen. I'm also, based on the motion from Counselor Hubie and Tierney and subject to any motions by council or the police board, I spoke to Chief Bell several times about initiating a third-party review of the, all the actions taken since the protests occurred and be able to report in 90 days what the outcome of that review is. But we'll be waiting to see what happens with the police board and at council today, should there be any other motions. But Chief Bell is fully supportive of participating with the city in doing that review. With that, I'd like to close again by recognizing the outstanding efforts of everyone who stepped up to support the police-led operation this weekend. Your work is appreciated by me, the senior leadership team, and the entire city. And now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Kim Ayotte to introduce our newest senior leader of our Emergency and Protective Services Department. Kim Ayotte?
Thank you, City Manager Katalakis. Well, we slowly start to get smiles on our face. I think I have some good news this morning with regards to our newest fire chief position. Following an extensive national search and a comprehensive competition, I'm very proud this morning to let you know that our very own deputy chief, Paul Hutt, is now the new fire chief for the City of Ottawa. Paul brings 28 years of service in emergency management and fire service. He's a lifelong learner. I've personally had great relationships with Paul with regards to the service he provided as a deputy of our urban operations. He also has a volunteer background. He truly cares about our people and the communities for which we serve, and I believe that Paul is an excellent choice and will do great things to keep our community safe. He has built great relationships with most of you already in his acting capacity, and it takes a very special kind of person to run the country's largest composite fire station. That means a fire department. That means a service that has both career and volunteer services. And I got to tell you a strong, Paul was by far the best candidate for truly understanding what it takes to run that type of service. So this morning, on behalf of EPS and the city, I'm proud to announce and present Paul. He's going to say a few words to you this morning. So congratulations, Paul, and over to you for a few words.
Well, GM Ayotte, thank you very much for those kind words. And I have to start by thanking senior leadership for their trust and their confidence in me to lead the service. I'm truly humble and honored to be appointed fire chief. I am extremely excited to continue to serve the citizens of Ottawa, the city itself, and members of council. So I'm really humble and honored today to be before council, and thank you very much.
Well, I think you saw, you may not have heard, Paul Chief, that there's lots of applause for you. We're very proud to welcome you to a new leadership role within the Ottawa Fire Service and wish you the very, very best over your, the many years ahead. Alors, flistation chef pour votre nouveau.
Congratulations, Chief, for your new position here at the City of Ottawa. We are so proud of you, your experience.
And I know that many members of council have worked with you in the past, and it's great that you have such broad experience both with the career and the voluntary sector. So congratulations, and GM Ayotte, a great choice on your behalf. And we thank all of those firefighters who played a key role as well over the course of the last several weeks. So we now have questions for staff, and then we'll go to the motions. Does anyone else have another motion? I have the ones that have been presented, plus a notice of motion by Counselor McKenney. Anyone else have any other motions so that we can circulate them before we go into questions? No? Okay. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to you and colleagues. Mr. Manager, how does the $30 million in costs get paid in the interim before we get potential assistance from provincial and federal governments? Where does this come out of?
Mr. Mayor, the money will continue to flow out of the budgets of the City of Ottawa, the Ottawa Police, and the various police services that contributed because their people are on their payroll. Their extraordinary costs that they'll be absorbing during the year as part of their cash flow, but then when the money comes in, it'll replenish what was spent by them.
Are we getting any indication from either the provincial and/or federal governments about monetary assistance?
The provincial government, no, but the federal government has indicated strongly that they're willing to push this forward and deal with it. And they've asked that we also send the invoices or the sum amount to the province, and then they want to discuss with the province an appropriate cost-sharing agreement. So I'm very optimistic that the federal government is going to come forward and take care of these costs from my discussions with them.
Very good. There is a motion, I believe, from Counselor King recently about holding per changes to the Ontario Police Services Act, holding organizers of what we've just gone through financially accountable for policing costs. How does that get addressed?
My understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that would have to be implemented by the provincial government, and I don't believe, and Mr. Way can correct me, but I believe he had told me this before, that it can't be applied retroactively, from what I understand, if the legislation is changed. David, am I incorrect in that assumption from what you told me?
Oh, you are, you are correct.
Can you, can you just explain that a little further? I don't understand what that means.
David?
Certainly. There are provisions in the, well, we'll call it the Revised Police Services Act. It has been passed, but it has not yet been declared in force. So it would be on the provincial government to declare that legislation in force, and it'll be effective from the date that it is declared in force. So until that time, again, unless it's specifically defined, and that, I think that I have to go back and amend to the act to make it retrospective, it will only apply from the date that it goes into force.
Fair enough. Are there other legal avenues the city can consider to hold organizers financially accountable for costs incurred?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's the question that the city managers put to us, and that myself and my team are going to be looking at, and then reporting back to council in the, in the coming days.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. There's been a lot of talk about the financial impacts of the occupation that's had on the city, not just the city's bottom line, but the local businesses as well, and I think that's a fair argument and a fair focus, one of the focus, focus eye for the city. How is the city addressing the psychological and emotional impacts that this occupation has had on residents, not just across the city, but in particular of the occupied wards where people were subjected to, you know, the noise, the harassment, the trauma of this? How can the city, is there a plan to proactively reach out to these impacted communities to try and understand not just the financial impacts, but the as-serious psychological and emotional trauma that people have gone through?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a really, I think, a good question to ask because we've been, I know Chief Bell has been having conversations with multiple stakeholders, working the phones the last couple of days on this topic. I know Donna Gray has also been having conversations with various community agencies, and that is a dialogue we've, we've started now in terms of how do we start the community healing? It's something that I've talked to Chief Bell about, and Donna, if you're prepared, it might be helpful if you give a perspective on some of the conversations you've been having with key community groups about how this might happen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there has been a number of conversations happening in the community, both with United Way and Ottawa Public Health around how to do a healing process with the community. And there's been a number of efforts led by United Way and with our Human Needs Task Force around assessing the impact of community organizations and agencies. And as you're aware, or you may be aware, United Way has launched a campaign of allocating and allowing community agencies to apply for support should they have been affected in the internal core in terms of the delivery of service. And those conversations have started. There's a number of community-led initiatives that are also being held in the community, and I'm happy to forward those to council for their awareness, where the community is taking a leadership role in having those discussions and healings. What we're trying to do is look at opportunities to fill the gaps, but also to have conversations with the community around how best to do that, whether those be wellness checks, whether those be community-led supports. So we really want the discussion to be with the community about how do we support the community to heal. And the Human Needs Task Force and Ottawa Public Health and as, and in partnership with, with United Way are prepared then to look at how best to support those activities and the timing of when the community is ready to do that healing process as well. So we anticipate that something will come in the, in the coming days and weeks to fill the gaps that have been left in the community.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm very interested in learning more. Obviously, the, the local councillors will be the leads in their own wards, but I'm, I'm very interested to see what the plan is. My, my last comment, Mayor, is for the Chair of the Police Services Board, and it's along the same lines, and that is the, the emotion that people felt and remain with respect to the police services. We certainly heard from many, many email and communique that we've all received from across the city, but in particular from people in the impacted wards, and the felt of abandonment that they had from the police during the occupation. There absolutely must be proactive outreach done by the Ottawa Police Services in these communities to restore that trust and confidence with the police. Just because the occupation is more or less over doesn't mean that it's back to normal, and I think there's a lot of work in these communities that, that needs to be invested. So again, it's similar lines where I, I hope that the police are thinking about this and that work can be done, can begin as soon as possible to restore those connections and those relationships and address those very real and raw feelings that no doubt remain. So I'll just park it there. I see many other hands. And thank you, Mr. Manager, City Manager, for the update.
Great. Thank you very much, councillor. And just to follow up on your, your first two questions, I've had a number of discussions over the last week with both federal and provincial elected officials who, A, understand we are keeping these costs documented, and we have every expectation that they will be there to cover those costs. And the response has been very positive. They understand we're in a unique situation here in Ottawa, and both orders of government have indicated they want to be helpful to the city. So thank you for raising that. Conseil Fleury, bonjour.
Just wondering if you could give me a few minutes to talk to my residents that have asked that from me, and then I'll ask my question. I'll be as clear as possible. Is that all right? Yes, of course.
While we must still understand why so long, over the long weekend, we saw a lot of progress to reclaim our city streets. The police operation was significant and proved to be the force needed. I want to take a moment to thank residents and businesses for your patience and engagement. We must bring Ottawa together and heal our wounds. I want to thank city staff. This list is by no means exhaustive, but measures like transit access, parking violations response, snow clearing, access to businesses, checkpoints, street closures were important. Thank you to the staff who were constantly available over the last 25 days to help problems solve and share information. I met daily with BIAs in the Corps inviting Catherine Rawson, Lisa Yasser, Mona, Joel Enusel to meet with the Rideau Centre, the Hotel Association, Ottawa Markets, the BIAs with city staff, and OPS to receive updates and share your questions and concerns. And thank you for making yourselves available. and share your questions and concerns. And thank you for making yourselves available.
Our public spaces were occupied, our residents were hostages. Confidence in our police forces was low, but it will take time to recover all our streets. But I think that the Ottawa residents should not have to cover the cost of all this. I would continue to work with the city and the federal and provincial government to ask that the costs incurred by the city of Ottawa during this occupation be covered.
This occupation is out on our downtown businesses cannot be understated. I'm optimistic to hear about the federal government's support recently announced. We hear from our business community that although a good step, much more relief funding is needed. I look forward to working with the business community and their employees to ensure everyone receives the support they need to recover. The end of the month is approaching quickly. Lost wages need to be covered as well.
We also have to work to regain the trust of our communities. We have significant healing to do.
A transparent investigation of the failures made across institutions is needed and will come. I'm committed to asking the tough questions we need answered to ensure that this can happen, this can never happen again. This is why I'm calling for an integrated public inquiry involving all three levels of government for the capital city. We all have a role in these critical conversations and a responsibility in the solutions to come. There will be future protests in our capital city, but we must never, never again allow the those coming to Ottawa under the guise, the disguise of protest to occupy our city and diminish the rights of those who live here. While distressing, the last twenty-five days provide an immense opportunity for us to rethink governance in the Parliament precinct. We also have the opportunity to reimagine our public spaces to truly serve the public, the people of Ottawa and peaceful visitors from across the globe. These events have been painful and we have much to learn and correct.
Next years will be a very, we'll have to ask a very difficult question for the next years. We have to build a better city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can go to questions now. Conseil Menard, go ahead.
I just have a few questions. The police checkpoints that exist now, is there any indication of when those might be stood down? Do we have any information on timing of those?
My understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that the plan is for police, based on the risk assessment, is to shrink the footprint of where the checkpoints are currently and eventually reduce them. But there is no set date of when they'll remove them until, I believe, we're through this coming weekend. I think they want to make sure that there is no possibility of a return of any significant protest back in the city. But they are looking this week to try and create a smaller footprint in which people have to go through it.
Okay, thank you for that. I suspect, and maybe you can just confirm for me, that the full transit routes restoration would also be contingent on that change? Or is that, are we expecting full transit route implementation without the detours to take place regardless of those checkpoints?
My understanding is that LC Transport will be adjusting their routes as the footprint starts changes. So as the footprint shrinks, LC Transport will step in to fill those routes.
Okay, I appreciated the change to the six and the seven on Bank Street yesterday. There was no transit service on Bank Street through that area. And the quick change by staff was appreciated to get those detours back to a better state. The last question I have is around the reports of several of these occupiers moving to rural areas outside of Ottawa. Is there any intelligence you can share, any information you can share in terms of what we might be seeing in the near future?
My understanding is that it's hard to predict, but they don't believe that they're going to stay. There's a sense that they're going to be moving on and they're just kind of regrouping, refreshing and then leaving. Right now, we don't have information that they plan to return to the city via Ottawa, from what I understand from police. But we'll hear more when police have their board meeting tomorrow. I believe that Chief Bell and his team are going to give an update exactly what's happening. But my understanding, in talking to Chief Bell yesterday, I didn't get a chance to talk to him this morning, is that they are monitoring it very closely and are all over it in the event there's any movement to come back to the city. But right now, it looks that that's not happening.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll just reiterate councillor Brockington's point about mental health needs right now. There's a huge challenge, obviously, in that occupied core that took place, but around there as well. So whether it's, you know, services that we can sort of have a mail out to people where we list services and availability of distress center and that sort of thing. People need on-the-ground support. This is a lot of trauma that people have experienced. And we really need to support them on the ground with OPH and other services. So I'll just reiterate that that point. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, manager, along with your team. This has been a marathon. And the problem is, we don't know where the finish line is. That's one of the concerns I have is what do we call finished? Because, yes, as we know, we still have the checkpoints set up and they're still necessary. And it feels a bit whack-a-mole where things just keep popping up. So how do we define when we're ready to to look into or review? You're on mute. Steve? Steve, you're on mute.
Sorry, Steve?
My apologies. I clicked it four times and it didn't click up. My apologies. I'm sorry, councillor. I didn't hear the, I heard the last part, but are you asking when the review will start or when you think?
Yeah, it's not when, obviously, we don't know when the review would start. But it's what are the, what are we looking for in terms of saying that we're ready to start the review? Because this seems to be going on and on. There, you know, with threats of coming back and the timelines of, you know, we I just wanted to get an idea of what we consider to be when we're ready to do a review.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the review, we can start the review now because we're going to be looking in the rearview mirror, basically, in the review and apply lessons going forward. The police are still, they still have their integrated command centers set up, incident command. So they are still working together, the main three, RCMP, OPP, and of course, led by Ottawa Police and Chief Bell. And so that's not going to change in the foreseeable future until we know there isn't any possibility of threat. But they are also adapting their plans to ensure that even if the threat seems dissipated, that they're ready to ramp up if they need to in the future. So they are making changes internally in terms of how they're looking at it. But the review can start, you know, almost, I mean, to start, we need to retain someone. We need the terms of reference. We need to do all those things. And the operation isn't over yet. So, you know, even my comments about the cost, when I said we think maybe thirty million dollars and and I can't be, I can't be, you know, completely solid on that number. But just to remind council, the costs are still being accrued. I mean, we're still experienced because police, we still have extra police here. We still have overtime costs and all the other things. So the costs will continue into the future. So we probably won't have the bill ready for a while. But the review, the review is going to start very soon, as soon as we retain a third party. And we can start looking at everything that's happened in the past and continue to improve on a parallel basis, what we're doing in the future.
Thank you. And in terms of the third-party review, can you tell me how it will be arms-length? You're talking about appointing. Is it the city that's appointing? It's not the province or the feds that are doing the appointing?
Well, we're still, we're still sorting that out in terms of procurement, who we would retain, who has that expertise in the field to do that. That's what the discussion is, what kind of scope. All that's just has been recently started to be discussed. And I don't have a, we haven't landed on that yet. We're still working our way through that.
And would the public be allowed to participate in the review as well? Would citizens be allowed? Or is this strictly among governments?
Well, the challenge we have is the motion has asked me to bring back a report by May. So that doesn't give us a lot of time, but we haven't sorted that out yet. We're still in the very early stages of talking about what am I look like and how we would do it. So I don't have an answer for you, councillor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I hope that we will make that consideration by those who are directly affected. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a very specific question about insurance. And I'm thinking back to a few weeks ago when council endorsed the AMO recommendations and calling on the province to reform joint and severable liability. And one of the problems with that is the disproportionate financial burden that the city often carries, especially when other parties in an insurance dispute do not have adequate coverage. And I'm concerned about this because we keep hearing about the possibility of participants in the occupation losing their insurance. And I was wondering if staff could comment on, is there a potential financial risk to the city due to these, due to these ongoing insurance issues? And, well, if there's any work underway to address that or to talk to the province about how we may be affected by the the ongoing problems of this joint and severable liability in relation to the occupation.
City solicitor, Mr. White.
And, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the very specific question, I'm not aware of any discussions on the issue of joint severability and how it might be applied in this instance. With respect to the potential cancellation of insurance, I think from the city's standpoint, obviously, it may reduce the access the city has to a potential source of recovery. At this point, it's, I'm not, we don't, we don't really have any information as to, you know, what insurance they may have canceled, what steps the federal government or the provincial government may have taken in that regard. But, you know, it's also unclear as to, even if there was insurance in place, whether it be available in the context of any recovery that the city or some other level of government might seek in respect of this, this incident.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it's early, but perhaps if I could ask if staff could keep council informed if they become aware of anything related to insurance risk or financial risk on the city related to that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Currie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am looking forward to an inquiry. But I think right now I'd like to follow on with what councillor Brockington and councillors Brockton and Menard started with on the healing part of this, because I think that really has to be our focus right now. So one of the challenges I'm hearing from people, whether it's on the phone or emails, is the belief by people all across Canada that this was a peaceful protest. When we know the people of this city would say it absolutely was not. And so that kind of what we really would term as gaslighting, you know, what somebody's telling you was peaceful was definitely not peaceful, is also damaging. And when you think about, you know, what we do in our schools, so if a trauma or a tragedy happens in our schools, we have a trauma, trauma incident team that comes in. And these people speak to, and they're psychologists and social workers, and they speak to students and staff and have them express how they felt, what happened to them and how, where, if they were right near the incident, or they're just, they're suffering themselves quietly. And so they're able to express that. And so we're getting emails, you know, people are putting, you know, their reality on Twitter. And I wonder if there wouldn't be a better way, and maybe it is a Human Needs Task Force, maybe it's Public Health, that to compile somewhat of a repository of what the reality was, that it wasn't peaceful. Because, you know, you have people on the news interviewed who are saying, you know, we're all about love, you know, this is love. And, you know, maybe that individual, you know, was a loving person and trying to act out of love, who knows? But the thought that all across Canada, people would think that we really were making this up, that it really was about love. I mean, that's, that's really upsetting to people. And whether people were traumatized in this situation, if they were watching, just, you know, from the safety of their homes, but just traumatized that this was happening in their city. Or whether they were living in a suburban area and went to a store and were forced to take off a mask. Whether people were listening to incessant horns and then had to be admitted, and we know this happened to the ROH because of what happens when you have to deal with incessant noise. Or whether people saw flags that traumatized them or re-traumatized them. Or people had people on their front lawn threatening their own personal safety. People have, will have a need to manage that trauma. And I feel like, you know, we could bring in teams and we could have a Human Needs Task Force and a lot of our community partners help people. And I think it's a great idea to send out a list of numbers for people to call. But I think there is a value in even, you know, when they have to look at why we, why the government invoked the emergencies act and explaining why we did that, that it wasn't peaceful at all, there were things happening that people will never know about. So for someone to just write us an email, that doesn't show everyone what really was going on. And I think that ability to express things may be very helpful. I certainly have sent a suggestion to Ottawa Public Health. But I think that has to happen now. You know, people just getting counselling after the fact on their own obviously is valuable. But I think there's a value in telling the truth in terms of what actually happened. So I just will leave that with you. I know the Human Needs Task Force is on that, but I do think that needs to be said because when we see incidents happen in schools, it is long-lasting. You know, despite, despite the councillors, despite everything that goes on, it carries on and affects people for the rest of their lives. And I feel like we need to put some focus on that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you. And I agree with councillor Currie. That is something that we really need to turn our sights to. Mr. Kenelek, I wanted to ask you what it will take, what elements will be taken into consideration in lifting the state of emergency?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, are you referring to the city's state of emergency?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we're going to be in lockstep with the federal government and the provincial government. We have two emergency acts in vote right now. And our view is that we would stay in our local state of emergency until the province and the federal government lift theirs.
And are you working with them on that? Do you know what it will take to lift the state of emergency? Like, what are the considerations?
Yeah, the considerations right now, like for the, from the federal government perspective, I haven't spoken my provincial counterparts yet. The federal government is certainly looking at, at, they're gathering information constantly from the RCMP and from the police sources and their intelligence sources in terms of when they feel the threats at a level that can be managed without the escalation of the provisions of the act and the staffing regulations. So they're monitoring that very closely, but they have not given us a specific data when they lifted. The House just passed it. It still has to go to Senate. But, you know, I don't want to speculate, but I would think, you know, somewhere in the next week or so, depending what's happening in the country, we could see a lifting.
Okay. And was the event at the Rito Centre yesterday in any way connected to the occupation?
My understanding, it was not. It was a shoplifter who brandished what appeared to be a firearm, returned to be imitation, apparently. But police responded with quite a heavy presence and locked down the Rito Centre and advised us all. And it took several hours to detain the person.
Thank you. And will the increased fines for bylaw infractions be decreased again once the state of emergency is lifted?
Kim, could you answer that? Because I actually don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Kim?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, or Mr. Mayor, yes, they will be lifted and returned back to their previous known, sorry, to their previous fines, their set fines.
Okay, thank you for that. And just a comment about the inquiry. It's my opinion that just a local inquiry is not sufficient. I believe that it needs to be integrated with all levels of government. This was a national issue. And there was a national response and the response involved and, uh, there was a national response and the response, uh, involved all levels of government right from the very beginning, right from the early days, right from the intelligence gathering before the convoy even rolled into town. And I, I think that, uh, this is a large puzzle. There's a lot of pieces that are missing. And in order to paint a picture of what happened, we need to put all those pieces in place. So my view is that the city of Ottawa should be calling for a full judicial inquiry where people can testify under oath. I think that would be important, uh, that we learn the whole story and the lessons from it. So I, I truly believe that city of Ottawa should be calling for a full, integrated, um, public judicial inquiry. Thank you.
Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor. Uh, I'll actually just briefly ask about the, um, state of the city, uh, post-occupation. Uh, in terms of, um, cleanliness and being sort of fully restored, uh, I still smell diesel. Um, and, and when I was, uh, watching some of what was going on, uh, on the streets, I, I think we can assume that there's, um, uh, uncleanliness, uh, in some of the occupied areas. How are we making sure that everything is fully restored to a clean state? And how long is that, uh, is that going to take?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Goldche, our general manager of public works, who's, uh, leading the, uh, the cleanup effort to, uh, engage in this one.
And Mr. Mayor, staff have actually been out, as, uh, Mr. Kanelakis indicated, since pretty much Friday when the, um, uh, cleaning operation started, uh, staff have not stopped and will continue to do so. And everything is being done right now in terms of removing debris, removing hazardous material, uh, and also making sure that there's a proper cleanup of all the snow and ice that, uh, has accumulated. And we're nearing the end of those operations, so you'll see basically the downtown right now in a very different state than it was.
Well, we'd be looking at things like, um, uh, power washing of, uh, you know, certainly city facilities, but, uh, other buildings as well.
At this point, I'm not anticipating that we would be doing any power washing in, in a winter. That really is a
It's a challenge.
It, it's a challenge. It would make the situation a lot more hazardous, um, than, than helpful at this point.
Could we revisit that when the weather warms up?
Uh, we certainly will, and, and certainly cleaning operations, especially in our business areas, is something that we carry out in the, uh, in a spring and the summertime. So definitely something that we'll be paying closer attention at that point.
Okay, I'll follow up, uh, maybe on that in a couple of weeks. Um, the only other thing I would just, uh, add, I know I had a chat, uh, with, um, uh, councillor McKenney and with councillor, um, Els Chanteri. Uh, it is important, uh, Donna, that the community let us know what it needs uh, with respect to some of the healing from the trauma that we've had. Um, and I, I know, I think we have buy-in from, from management and, and from, uh, from councillor Els Chanteri, uh, that it will be the community that lets us know, uh, what resources they need. Uh, and I'm confident the city will, will provide all those resources once we know what they are. We don't want to impose on the community. They've been imposed on enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Egli, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, I, this is probably a question for, for Mr. White, I think. I'm just following up on something that, uh, councillor Deans raised. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, so I'll look to you to correct it, but, but following, um, the invocation of the emergencies act, one of the things that's mandatory as a result of that is that, uh, there will be a federal inquiry as to events leading up to and the invocation of the act. Is that, is that not correct?
Uh, that is my understanding. Um, obviously the idea being to, to determine what, what prompted the invocation of the act, um, you know, beyond just the debate in, in parliament.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think that's helpful for the people around the table to understand, you know, how many different eyes are going to be looking at what happened and, and, and what's mandatory, um, and, and, and will occur regardless of what, uh, the motion brought by my colleagues, which I think is a good one to, to have a, a deep naval gaze at, at a local level as to what occurred. But there will be another, there will be another oversight or another look. So, so thank you for that clarification, Mr. White.
Thank you, councillor Egli. Uh, councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions for you, Mr. Kanelakis. Uh, you referenced earlier about, um, uh, the city, uh, trying to recoup costs from other levels of government here. Uh, can you expand a bit on that? Like, uh, have we actually done a formal request yet or are we still compiling the numbers to, to get an accurate ask before we do that?
No, we've had discussions actually from day one about the potential for seeking costs from them from the very first weekend, quite frankly. Uh, but they're now waiting for the bill. Uh, we haven't been, as I said earlier, this operation is continuing. It's not over. We still have a lot of, uh, police and support staff in this city from other police agencies across the country. We're still here on standby in the event this flares up again. So those costs are continuing. They're tabulating it. Ottawa Police has been collecting from the beginning, as has, uh, the city of Ottawa. But then there was a exponential growth when we brought in all those officers last, before last weekend, um, with respect to accommodation, food, transportation, all the other expenses to keep them here, as you can imagine. So now, uh, we're tracking all that and, um, and, uh, we'll have, I'm hoping that we'll have a much, we'll be much closer to where we're at at some point later next week. To some, but we have not submitted anything at this point. Um, they did, we did give them a sense of what the costs were a day. And I know people were quoting, um, you know, Ottawa Police was quoting eight hundred thousand dollars a day and we were, we were quoting about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand a day. That was before the significant ramp up of all the police services that came into town prior to last weekend.
Uh, and you keep using the term they, uh, does they mean, uh, federal only or federal and provincial? Cause I would assume both would want to contribute.
Yeah, when I said earlier about the province, I haven't spoken to the province. The mayor's been speaking to the ministers there. I've been speaking to deputy ministers in, uh, at the federal level and, uh, they certainly, um, are expecting that we would be submitting, um, the cost to both the federal and provincial. And what I was told is that they would work out what an appropriate cost sharing agreement is to fund us.
Okay, and earlier you mentioned, uh, the motion that councillor Tierney and I put in, uh, asking for a, a quick, uh, review of this to prepare us for the summer, uh, and to, to try to see what went wrong and what went right so that, uh, decisions can be made from that. Uh, I'm happy to hear that, uh, you're, you've started that process. Uh, I hope that you can keep council informed because I'm sure councillors around the table can suggest certain questions that should be, uh, answered by that review. Uh, I've heard a couple of people mention that maybe we shouldn't go ahead with that and just do a joint inquiry with other levels of government. And I would urge my colleagues not to support doing, um, not doing the review right now because I think it's very important for, uh, our, uh, city to be ready for what comes next. Uh, I think we all know that an integrated review will take years. It will not give us answers in time for, uh, the summer. And I, I think, uh, I don't want to, um, I don't, I don't want to see a delay in that. I know this report will not give us all the answers. That will come from a federal review and likely a provincial review. Uh, but it's an opportunity for the city to work with the police services board to, uh, give us, uh, some, uh, quick things that we need to look at and improve uh, and, and build upon to protect our city better. So I'm asking everybody to, uh, please, uh, continue to support having this, uh, initial review done independently but by the city, uh, so that we get those answers quickly. And, and then we can support inquiries at the other and, and contribute to inquiries from the other levels of government. The, um, other thing, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to make a, a couple of comments about today. Uh, is now okay to do that or would you rather I wait?
Yeah, no, that was the time. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to, uh, take this opportunity to thank my colleagues that are wearing pink today for Pink Shirt Day. Uh, it, um, for those that aren't aware, it started in two thousand and seven back in my hometown in Nova Scotia. And, uh, what it was, was teenagers, uh, went out and got pink shirts to support one of their classmates that was being bullied. It has now grown to an international day, usually the, uh, last Wednesday in February. And I think it's important to all of us, uh, to, to show support for this in our community. And, uh, also want to mention, uh, that this year's theme is lifting each other up. And I think that's a, a lesson that we can all learn. And, uh, uh, I hope, uh, that each of us can, uh, uh, do our bit today to, uh, stop bullying in our communities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, excuse me. Thank you, councillor Hubley, and thank you for your advocacy, uh, for this day. Conseil Fleuré, s'il vous plaît.
I have a few questions, but I can wait if you want to go to Mr. King first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I just want to, uh, lend, uh, support, uh, to councillor Hubley on his leadership and acknowledge his leadership on, on anti-bullying. You know, I think we could argue writ large, we saw examples of the city being bullied. Uh, but we stood against that, and I think that that echoes, uh, very much, uh, what councillor Hubley has, uh, championed in terms of this initiative, uh, that we need to stand tall in, when we see these incidents of, of bullying, and we saw bullying of our city. But our city continues to stand tall and it will continue to progress. Uh, and I also want to, uh, lend my support to, to his statements about that review, uh, that would be city-led. Uh, I would, uh, concur, uh, that we need to, to move forward, uh, with those actions uh, to determine, uh, what better steps we can take in terms of emergency preparedness in the city. Um, and, and so that will be a very important, uh, uh, review and, and I would look forward, uh, to participating in that and also its ultimate results. It'll be very important, uh, for the city and for other, uh, inquiries that will go forth. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank, uh, the police service, uh, which did yeoman work and, and multiple police services, um, over, uh, this weekend, starting on Thursday evening, um, addressing, uh, this crisis, um, a crisis not just of local proportion but of national proportion. And I'd also like to thank staff for the, uh, work that they have done. Um, and I'll have, uh, some questions for staff about impact to infrastructure. But we understand that, uh, the coordination of that work, um, in terms of city infrastructure uh, and, and, um, city initiatives, uh, was key, um, to, uh, the, uh, police action that was undertaken uh, to, to, uh, eject, uh, this illegal occupation from our downtown core. It's important for us to ultimately listen to communities. So I am very thankful, uh, for, um, the interventions by councillor Brockington, by councillor Leaper. Um, it is important for us in the days ahead to listen to the community and to have them ascertain and determine how we will move forward in terms of addressing mental health impacts and physical health impacts. Um, this has not just, uh, impacted, uh, the downtown core, but many adjacent, uh, adjacent wards. I know my ward was affected by the, uh, encampment at Coventry Road, and that had a major impact on residents in Overbrook. And we're going to continue to have conversations with those residents and ensure that they obtain the resources that they need to heal as well. So we're united, I think, in, 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 in this, in this vision of obviously, um, recovery, uh, both social and economic in our city. And it's going to be so key that we, we work together in unity. I do have a question that builds upon, um, councillor Leaper's intervention for city staff. And that, uh, involves, uh, the impact on infrastructure. I know that councillor Leaper was talking about sanitation, which was, uh, obviously a massive impact in, in, uh, the affected areas, especially in the downtown core. But I was just curious if staff could briefly, uh, discuss the impact to infrastructure, uh, looking at everything from, uh, deferred maintenance that might have had to occur in the affected zones over the past, uh, several weeks to the, uh, potential of damaged infrastructure, uh, by the illegal occupiers.
Mr. Kanelakis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. Um, and thank you to the councillor for the question. Um, Alan Gonche could speak to some of the deferred maintenance if there was any. Obviously, we weren't able to get in there and Tammy Rose, uh, might be able to speak to any other infrastructure that she's aware of that's happened in the, in the red zone, uh, while this was on for the 24 days. Alan, do you want to start?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, I'm not aware of any deferred maintenance that would have taken place, especially at this time, uh, at this time of the year. Uh, the piece that will remain to be, uh, to be assessed is basically any, any longer term impacts, especially along Wellington Street where we had a lot of heavy vehicles, uh, along that corridor. Uh, but that's going to be a broader assessment undertaken by, uh, by Tammy's group.
No, I appreciate that answer. Uh, you know, I would have anticipated that, uh, there would have been degradation to, uh, infrastructure with, uh, these heavy trucks. Um, you know, there was the unknown as to, uh, whether there would have been works that needed to have been done that would have been deferred. And it would just be my recommendation to staff that if there are infrastructure impacts as well, that we actually do monitor, uh, those costs, uh, based on, uh, the, um, um, presence of, of this illegal, uh, occupation and protests, and that those costs are also added to the calculation, uh, of costs that, uh, we would ask, uh, for some compensation, uh, from senior levels of government for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Conseil Fleuré, s'il vous plaît.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to ask questions.
I'm, I'm looking and I'm seeking information from you. Obviously, there's been the daily meetings that, uh, your team and I have been hosting with BIAs and so on. But are there, uh, other mechanisms that give us a sample of, of what other interventions, uh, we need uh, for, uh, our, our business districts in the core?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councillor, are you referring to, um, in addition to the motions that you have, are there tools that we haven't implemented?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just, no, I'm seeking, uh, clarity on if there is, uh, a way for businesses who have particular needs, uh, even if they're not the city that we, uh, actually understand them and capture them in our, in our consideration. I think we're doing the right thing today with the number of motions, but I'm curious to see if there is a, a, a more formal liaison between, uh, your, or the city and, uh, the various BIAs and their members.
My understanding, my understanding is we initiated. I was going to ask Steve Willis to, uh, comment because there is efforts with the, uh, BIA associations and other business groups to have that conversation. Steve?
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, as a result of the pandemic, we've had a standing committee involving the, uh, Ottawa Coalition of BIAs, OCOPIA, and many representatives of the downtown BIAs have been participating through that. That also includes the Board of Trade and other Ottawa Tourism and other business interests. That, that group's been mobilized all along and there are daily communications between the BIAs, staff and economic development. And economic development has been sending out, uh, bulletins to all of the stakeholder groups as new information becomes available on municipal initiatives, provincial and federal initiatives. And I, I think the lines of communications are absolutely open. We, uh, worked, uh, closely with many of the councillors to put the rapid economic recovery initiatives that are before council today, uh, that's based on information we've had from many of the, of the, the BIAs. Uh, a lot of the things they've said to us formed those ideas that councillors are moving forward with today. And the door is open for further conversations with them. And as I said, our, my, my staff and economic development are in almost daily communications.
Good. No, and I, I think it's important to, to bring that to record that there is formal and important, uh, liaison functions there to, to connect in. Maybe on the transit, I believe it was a, a colleague that raised it earlier. Um, it's great to see the LRT back. I know there's a motion on, uh, extending, uh, free service, which I'll be obviously supporting. But, um, wondering, um, the, the gap in between what is Rito Centre to, uh, to be, to start and end stations for both, um, for, for actually wards, uh, extended from councillor Leaper to councillor Menal, to councillor King, to councillor McKenney. Like, these routes all, uh, in, in various ways start and end at Rito Centre. So the, the, I don't know if, how many of you have been on the ground? I know ma- many of you have, but the spot right at the National Arts Centre that prevents that connection to Rito Street. that prevents that connection to Rita Street is a challenge. So I've had very constant conversations with Pat and Renee, and I'm thankful for that. Is there a way to create a bus-only opening through that segment to allow for more, for the detours to cease and go back to more normal transit connections there? And I know ultimately it becomes a police authority review, but if we were to just do it buses only, I think we would correct some of the challenges we are finding ourselves in.
Renee, are you on the line? You were?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Effectively, councillor Fleury and I and with Pat were in discussion regarding that. And we'll continue to figure out to see if it's possible to do so. But as we used to say, for sure, we need that OPS leave us the route to be able to bring the buses back. But we'll continue to look after this particular demand to see if it's possible to do something.
And I appreciate Renee, your work and Pat's work as well. I guess, I guess, Steve, I guess I'm turning it back to you that now OPS and the police authorities might not be as sensitive to these local routes. And if we could bring to their attention, you know, even if it's just bus-only connection through that space, I think it would go a long way. So is that something that you can take away?
Yeah, we'll take that away, and Kim will bring that into the ELC. And we'll raise that as a request and see what can be accommodated to make that happen and then work with Renee and Pat. So we'll take that away, councillor, no problem.
Okay, thank you. And my final question relates to what I am in full comfort is, which is an integrated public inquiry by three levels of government. And I also, so I agree with Diane on that. I agree with Al too. We don't want to wait. If there are measures that we can implement, let's implement them now. But the last thing I would want is for, you know, over and over of the duplication of effort and work, which I don't think serves well the capital. So my question on that is, you know, Steve, you're talking about the mayor connecting with mayors, with ministers provincially and with your work with ADMs and deputy ministers federally. I wonder if we, do we need to signalize our local intent and need for an integrated inquiry? And if so, what does that look like from your perspective?
Mr. Mayor, I think the challenge right now is that, you know, as a, we've implemented our emergency order here locally at the city, and part of that is a requirement to do an after-action report on any incident. In this case, it's complicated by the fact that the city, as emergency management, can't do it without the cooperation of the police and the police board. So the board also has to support the review that councillor Hubley and councillor Tierney. The chief certainly is supportive of doing that, and I think that we need to do that. It won't get to the depths of, I think, what other councillors have talked about from an inquiry and all. But it will give us good information about immediately implementing anything that we think didn't go right into the future, especially as we head into the summer. We could have other protests here, and so we can quickly make changes to the way we handled collectively this event over the last month. Then you've got the requirement that there will be an inquiry at the federal level with respect to the Emergency Act that was implemented. And I think that we have to see how that plays out because the last thing I think we all want to get into is to have our review, then ask the federal government, ourselves and the province, to get into a secondary review. At the same time, you have a public inquiry that's required under the Emergency Act. And so I think it's not, I'm not saying not to do it. I'm saying that we should be prudent in how we move forward on this. Start with our local review so we can get information out as quickly as possible to council, to the public, in terms of things we need to change. Let's see what happens when the Emergency Act is rescinded and then what steps the federal government takes to do their inquiry, which will be, I think, all-encompassing with all levels of government and staff on the ground from all levels of government. And then you can make a decision on whether you're moving us forward in terms of, you know, bringing together elected officials. I think I saw a motion, elected officials from three levels of government to do another review. I think we just have to be careful in terms of tripping over each other on this. And so the starting point has to be, in my mind, we need to do our own internal review anyways. That is, we are going to do it regardless if we're directed by council or not. It's in our bylaw. And then the second piece is, how do you want to approach the next stage to bring in the various levels of government? So I'm in the hands of council. If you move the motion, that's fine. We'll do our best. I'm not suggesting not to do it, but I like to be prudent on the approach.
Yeah, and I'm not sure which motion you're reflecting, but if it's relating to mine that councillor King is seconding, it doesn't relate to the emergency inquiry piece, so I just want to clarify that. Really, it's much different. I'll speak to it at that point. But I guess I'm very comfortable with the way you're describing. We have work to do locally that we need to implement measures as early as the summer if need be. So I'm certainly comfortable with that, and that's why I'm saying I'm in line with Alan's point. But I'm also in line with Diane's point, which says, you know, we need to be evaluated at all levels of our responsibilities in this and decisions that were made or not made. And I think if we hold that at a local level, it's a bit challenging. People will be looking for justice to actually conduct a review and get full recommendations. And, you know, through that, I would hate to see the province and the feds conduct separate efforts. So, you know, I'll leave it in your hands, Steve, to advise us as to how do we inform senior levels of government of a need of their review to be inclusive, to be integrated.
Conseil, is there other questions, conseil? The two, councillor Law, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this has obviously been an incredibly difficult time for our residents and for our staff and for ourselves. And the division that we've seen here has been replicated in our families, our friendships and in our personal lives. We're all exhausted after two years of being apart. Our morale is really low, and the lack of familiarity that we have with each other because of the being apart has bred a lot of palpable contempt in this place. And every single person across our country has been affected in some way by this pandemic. It was really hard for me to watch, you know, veterans clashing with police this weekend, just as it's been hard to see people completely taken up by misinformation and the doubt that is sown in our public institutions. So as these events start to come to a close, I just wanted to thank our staff and all of you for your hard work and dedication on behalf of your communities. We may not always agree in this place, but we have to recommit to not allowing ourselves to descend into the personal, and we can't allow it as it serves no one. All of us are duly elected, and we're here because we care about our communities, and we must carry that respect for one another moving forward. People need to know that we're here for them, and we have to continue to be. So as it's related, can we receive a brief update on how the Human Needs Task Force is working to help those who have been unable to work through this? And perhaps some information on the easiest way to access those services? So Donna might be able to give us a brief update. That would be helpful, I think, at this point. Thanks.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, and happy to do that. So the Human Needs Task Force, since the beginning of the protests and occupation, we're in continual contact with community agencies in the core that we have direct relationships with. So we've been working to look at where were the most significant needs, whether that be care for people who are unable to receive services that they would normally receive in the downtown core, and making sure that the service providers were able to receive that service. For our Human Needs Task Force, we have a subgroup on food and delivery of food and access to food, whether that be for isolated seniors or individuals who did not have access to food. So we're worked with those community partners, and those community partners mobilized to ensure that hampers and food supply could be maintained in that core area where people were impacted and unable to get out to get food. In addition, we were looking at mental health support. So there's a number of fact sheets that have been provided and been outreach in the community about how people continue to receive services for mental health or, you know, people experiencing mental health crisis. We also were working to ensure that those areas or businesses, which had employees who were unable to do, unable to work, were aware and made available resources that they would have direct access into our social assistance system and that they were aware of the types of emergency support should they have individual issues that they were unable to go to work or unable to pay rent, et cetera. And so we made those direct contacts with those businesses, including the Rita Centre, and have established a direct team that have been responding to those needs so that we could make sure that those needs were immediately met. And then we've been working on recovery with the community and trying to find, as I stated, the best way for recovery, knowing that the community really wanted to take responsibility and to lead those discussions. And there is a number of events being hosted by our local community. One is about, you know, re-healing the community that's done in partnership with the Black Mental Health Coalition, Somerset West, the United for All group that is really starting the dialogue around what the community needs to heal. We have a small team established as part of the Human Needs Task Force to look at what additional supports that would come out of that response that we would need to mobilize. Some of the things that we did early in the pandemic to disadvantaged communities, such as wellness checks with Ottawa Public Health, et cetera, we will explore if that's the needs of the community. But as the councillor stated, councillor Leeper stated, we really are in a wait-and-see at this point in time in terms of the needs of the community. We've continued as well to operate respite centers and our physical distancing centers that maintained operations in the downtown core throughout the entire occupation. And we're able to work with our Ottawa Police colleagues and security officials to make sure that the shelters in the downtown core, that people still had access to that and staff were able to get to work and maintain service throughout that delivery, as well as the food delivery and all those services that were impacted as a result of the occupation. Work with those organizations and agencies and our own physical distancing to ensure that food distribution patterns to homeless were enabled and had a different mechanism. We went to a different mechanism, food boxes, et cetera, during the period of time to ensure that there were no delays. So the team has been extremely active through this and really feel that, you know, the needs of the vulnerable have continued to pay a priority attention to not just in the areas that are occupied in the city, but special attention to that as well as broader community.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, and thanks for your hard work and your teams as well.
I just want to echo councillor Law's thanks to Donna. A lot of the city services that were involved with the occupation were very visible to the public. A lot of the work that Donna and her team did was very much behind the scenes, supporting some of our most vulnerable. And Donna, if you could pass along our sincere thanks to your entire team on the Human Needs Task Force that really started out with COVID and has morphed into COVID and post-occupation. I know that colleagues on council are very grateful for the work that you're doing and continue to do. So thank you very much. Councillor Deans, did you have another issue?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this whole issue of the local review. And I'm just wondering, Mr., I personally think that it needs to be a public inquiry, all levels of government and nothing less should do. I'm worried about the independence of a local review. And, Mr. Cadillacus, I'd just like to know if you're intending to bring the terms of reference back to council, how you're going to guarantee independence? If you will be given the results before the public sees it, before council sees it, like an audit? How will all that work?
We haven't, Mr. Mayor, we haven't figured out how all that would work. Our typical, as I said, our typical after-action report, we hire a third party who comes in, reviews all the people that were involved in the operations, review, interviews, community members and people that were affected by the, by the, by the incident, by the event. Then a report is crafted, and then that report is shared back with council. And staff, of course, review it because it's like an audit to a certain extent. We've got to review to make sure that it's accurate, the details are there. And so that part of it, we normally do. The complicating factor in this is that police, you know, own a big piece of this because they were the lead agency responding, responsible for. So we have to get police participation and their ability to basically, you know, open up their operations to the reviewers, to the people that evaluate this so we can do it. And I got a message from our auditor general that, you know, she'd be happy to help too if that brings a sense of independence. And we're just formulating that right now. We're in the early stages of figuring out how are we going to do this with the further complication of several agencies involved. And I agree with you on the councillor, on the notion that, you know, there should be a higher level look at this because it involves multiple levels of government. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But each review has a specific purpose. Our review and the purpose of our review is what do we need to do internally at Ottawa Police, ourselves as a city, to improve how we respond to any future events? It's about learning and getting better and learning from any mistakes were made. What went well? What were people's reactions? The other one, and we won't be able to get into the other levels of government and what happened at ministerial levels and all the decision-making that happened there. That's more for the inquiry, which is part of the Emergency Act or any other thing that the government chooses to do or the council wishes to recommend they do. So I will have more information about how we're going to conduct our internal one once I figure it out with the police chief and with our emergency management folks here to see what is the best way to do that, that's transparent, that responds to the community needs, and that can get done in a timely fashion so we can implement some recommendations immediately. And I will speak to our auditor general about her thoughts on how that might be done. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. So we have a number of motions before us. Councillor Harder, seconded by councillor King. Councillor Harder, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please, we'll go and deal with these one at a time.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting it up because I've got them mixed up in my order here in front of me. So this is with regard to the businesses and helping them out. Whereas the interim property tax bills have been sent and require payment due on March 17th, 2022, this asks our chief financial officer to report back to our next council meeting on March 9th with a proposal to defer the interim property taxes for affected businesses in the area impacted by the occupation.
Okay, so this is councillor Harder moved, signed by councillor King. Anyone have a question or comment? Councillor King?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just had some comments on this item. Over the past week, I and council colleagues have heard directly from small businesses, primarily retailers, service providers and restaurants, concerning the impact of the illegal occupation on the downtown core primarily. We know that over 40% of businesses in the affected areas closed due to concerns and obstructions arising during the protest, and over 75% of businesses lost revenue directly because of the illegal occupation. The economic impact of the illegal occupation over the past four weeks is estimated at nearly $200 million in Ottawa, and the reputational damage due to the impact of the protest is ultimately incalculable. Due to the overwhelming challenges that businesses have been experiencing over the course of the pandemic, it is important that the city do everything within its power to jumpstart the economic recovery in our downtown neighborhoods. We recognize that small business is the lifeblood of our city's economy and that they contribute to the vibrancy of our neighborhoods. Initially, to address the challenges of COVID-19, as we know, this council approved the creation of a new small business tax subclass. And the introduction of that small business property tax subclass is a long-term tax policy tool. It creates tax parity between small businesses and small standalone properties and small businesses operating in large shopping malls that already benefit from the lower shopping property tax rate. In line with this action, I'm proud today to be supporting this new motion to seek a property tax deferral for businesses in the areas impacted by the occupation. Businesses have been working over the past two years, as we know, to overcome constant disruptions, including lockdowns due to COVID-19, inflationary pressures that we've recently seen, so price increases, labor shortages, and now even supply chain disruptions. Achieving a successful recovery has now been threatened by these recent protests, which have directly threatened the viability of businesses. And we've heard this directly from businesses, as councillor Fleury has said. I, along with other colleagues, have been on daily calls with BIAs, hearing about the risk of businesses now facing eviction because of the challenges around the protests, as well as the viability of livelihoods, of wages that really support, you know, the employees that support these businesses. So through these very challenging times, it's ultimately important for us to come together to support Ottawa's small businesses, restaurants, our tourism operators and special events, as well as their employees. This motion works to provide that support and therefore in turn, I'm pleased to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King for seconding and councillor Harder for moving. On the motion, carried. Next motion is support for business district impacted by the occupation, moved by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by councillor Fleury. Councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to councillor Fleury because obviously we've been working together for a while on this. And also some of you would know as councillor representative on the Ottawa Council of BIA, we all know the impact and those businesses. I want to echo the thanks to my colleague Jeff Leeper for inviting us yesterday. Unfortunately, we couldn't attend short notice, but it was a great idea, a great initiative, and I hope we can do more of that in the future. Just to put in a little bit of perspective, as a former small business owner, I can assure you, no bank or no institution will give you loan or anything for your business. So if you own a business, you operate a business, you have to use your equity, your house to be able to get a mortgage. And we heard loud and clear some of them, the business owner, the three weeks impact on their business lot more than was the two years during the pandemic. And this is heartbreaking to their staff, to their customers, to their food, whatever they were doing, what type of business they have, they have a huge impact on that because during the pandemic, they get some government relief and I'm grateful the mayor worked with some local MPs to receive $20 million to support those businesses. But I think we heard from my colleague King, 20 million, maybe not nearly enough what those businesses have lost. So this motion is to, Mayor, if I can skip the whereas and go right to therefore be it resolved, council one, approve funding contribution up to $50,000 for each of the following BIAs and Business Association to support area recovery, Spark Street BIA, Bank Street BIA, Rido Street BIA, Biword Market BIA, Algen Area Business Association. Item number two, approve a funding contribution of up to $25,000 for each of the following central area BIAs to support area recovery. Vanya BIA, Somerset Village BIA, Somerset Street Chinatown BIA, Preston Street BIA, Westboro BIA, Wellington West BIA, and Lee BIA. Three, approve a funding contribution of up to $25,000 for the Ottawa Market Corporation. Item number four, authorize the use of $450,000 from the Tax Stabilization Reserve for this purpose and the Direct Economic Development Service to develop the application process and funding criteria, including an investment at least at fifty percent of the received fund in collaboration with the Ottawa Coalition of BIA and ensure city contributions are invested in recovery initiative to conclude no later than July 31st, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this motion before us today. I just wanted to seek some additional clarification on how we expect the monies to be used. In clause one, it says to support area recovery. Clause two, it says to support area recovery. Clause three, it says to be used for economic recovery. Could councillor El Shantiri just expand? Do we expect them to do proactive outreach to get people to come into these districts to shop? Is it to be used to offset operating costs or give their members a dues break? What are the expectations on how these monies are to be used?
Mr. Mayor, if councillor El Shantiri would allow me, perhaps I could take that question if the councillor is okay with that?
Sure, absolutely.
So economic development, the operative clause in number five in the motion directs Economic Development Services staff to come back with the criteria for the allocation of the money. And what we have had, the discussion we've had so far with some of the interested parties is it'll be different on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis, what's the best strategy. But really, the intent is this is about bringing people back to the neighborhoods to spend their dollars. So whether that's marketing money, whether it's holding in a special events that would bring people down, we have to look at the capacity of each BIA on a case-by-case basis to figure out what they're best able to do. And we'd like them to tell us what they wish to use it for. I think we would like to see it focused on activities to bring people to the area rather than, you know, as I said, your suggestion about repayment of dues is not the sort of thing that I think we would like to see it used for. It's about bringing people there.
Excellent. There's 101 ways to spend money, but the general manager's explanation is exactly how I would like to see these monies used, this investment. So I appreciate that explanation and as a result, I will support this motion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to follow up here. This motion is dealing with all the BIAs, but I thought we had done a previous motion before to say that whenever we're doing something under the umbrella of all the BIAs, we would include the Board of Trade as well because of the work that they do and the fact that they cover a lot of businesses that are not covered under the BIAs and would be a very big supporter of what we're trying to do here.
Can I just comment on that? Matt Gravel just reminded me that the Board of Trade has given their full endorsement for this and they have not put in a request for funds.
Okay, then that answers my question. If they don't want it, we don't need to give it. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, councillor. So on the motion as presented, carried, adoptee. The next item is musical performances to attract customers to impacted areas. As you know, our colleague councillor Leeper has worked very closely with O-Mike, the Ottawa Music Industry Coalition, and I'd ask him to introduce the motion and it's seconded by a very talented performer himself, who was just on the second Shepherds of Good Hope wonderful video that we saw yesterday. Councillor Leeper, seconded by councillor Luloff, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I can think of no better way to bring residents and tourists and others back into the affected areas than with some kick-ass music. So this will propose putting some money into O-Mike so that they can replicate some of the success that they had with last summer's City Sounds series, which brought people into BIA areas. And I think a number of you had the opportunity to enjoy some of those concerts, whereas the city was subject to a significant protracted protest and occupation of streets and public areas in and adjacent to the downtown core for a period of three weeks, whereas this disruption and the resulting street closures, noise and unacceptable behavior from protesters severely impacted business operations in the affected area, with many businesses unable to provide a safe environment for employees and customers and opting to limit operating hours or close, whereas additional efforts will be necessary to support the resumption of regular business operations in affected areas by encouraging customers to visit and highlighting the vitality of Ottawa's main streets and neighborhoods. Whereas the Ottawa Music Industry Coalition is a not-for-profit, membership-based organization dedicated to growing the city's music industry for the benefit of its artists, businesses and the city as a whole. Whereas O-Mike delivered a successful outdoor concert series in 2021, funded by the city and in collaboration with BIAs, Business Associations and other partners as part of the city's Economic Recovery and Rebound Program. Therefore, be it resolved, the council, one, approve a funding contribution of $50,000 to O-Mike to deliver an expanded City Sounds series in 2022 to support ongoing economic recovery in the areas impacted by the occupation. And two, authorize the use of $50,000 from the Tax Stabilization Reserve for this purpose. And three, direct Economic Development Services to collaborate with O-Mike to ensure the program includes outdoor venues along affected main streets and neighborhoods and considers partnership opportunities with downtown cultural venues such as the Bytown Museum, the Ottawa Art Gallery and Arts Court by way of example, to be delivered no later than August 31st, 2022.
Great. The question, the commentary, on the motion carried, adoptee. Our next motion is no charge service on line one. Councillor Hubley, signed by councillor McKenney. This is to build on the work that councillor McKenney had brought to us with respect to no charge service on a number of routes in her ward and Ottawa or Rito Vanya. Councillor Hubley, if you'd like to introduce it, please. Councillor Hubley, are you there? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, there we go. It took several tries, but got the button off. You'd think after two years, this thing would be greased better. Okay, here we go. Whereas the city was subject, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a second here. I can't see the motion. Do you want me just to go right to the therefore be resolved? Would that help? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Can I get that scrolled up then, please? Okay, therefore be it resolved, the council expand the no charge transit service to include service on line one to start on Friday, February 25th and continuing to 30 days after the city's state of emergency ends. And be it further resolved that foregone revenue from the no charge service at an incremental cost of approximately 1,052 million be funded from the transit reserves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much, councillor McKenney, for seconding the motion.
Excuse the question, the commentary, carried, adoptee. Thank you. Next is a motion with respect to no charge parking in impacted commercial districts. Motion is moved by councillor Tierney, and his capacity is Chair of Transportation, signed by councillor Gower.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And just before I lead into it, and I'll just go to the therefore be resolved part of this motion. I think we're seeing it firsthand, how all these businesses for three weeks were directly impacted. Most recently, there was a very impassioned video by a gentleman named Hugo, the own C-Senior, down on Rito Street. And he, a real passion speech that he had given, and certainly it's now turning into something more than that. All of Ottawa, all of Canada is seeing this. They've been donating and calling in gift cards and he's been paying it forward, giving it back to the community and people that need meals. I love this. I think if there's a silver lining, let's all be like Hugo. I'm going down for a burrito tonight myself. But we also want to allow residents of Ottawa that same opportunity to go down there and support these businesses. Look, we've done a terrific job in our own communities, making sure we shop local. Now, I think residents of Ottawa want to be able to support those districts that have been impacted the most. So therefore, be it resolved that city provide free parking at all city-owned on-street parking spots in the downtown core with the areas between and including Bronson Avenue, Gladstone Avenue, Queen Elizabeth Drive, Wellington Street and the Byward Market between Sussex Drive, Rito Street, King Edward Street, Murray Street, beginning Friday, February 25th and ending Thursday, March 31st. And that the city provides free parking at the city-owned lots located at the same areas at 210 Gloucester Street, Lot 3, 234 to 250 Slater Street, Lot 9, 422 Slater Street, Lot 18, 70 Clarence, Lot 4, 142 Clarence, Lot 5, 110 Laurier at Lot 6, Friday, February 25th and ending Thursday, March 31st. Therefore, be further resolved that the loss of parking fee revenue estimated approximately $755,000 and the resulting, and the results in the year-end net loss be covered by the Parking Reserve Fund and reported through 2022 Parking Services Annual Report. Therefore, be further resolved that the general manager of Public Works facilitate no charge parking and gate-controlled facility while still requiring the visitors to take a ticket in order to manage the traffic flow in these facilities. Therefore, be further resolved that any posted time limits in the areas and facilities identified above continue to be enforced. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just that last line is important because we want to make sure that the time, posted time limits are respected because we don't want, we want to have turnover in the neighborhoods. We don't want someone parking there, obviously, all day. You know, particularly since we asked all of these occupiers not to park all day. So I think we have to make sure that the stores and the restaurants and the employees know that that limit will still be on there, if it's a three-hour limit, a two-hour limit, because we want to encourage turnover into those commercial areas. So thank you for that. Councillor Kavanaugh, please, on the motion.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was my concern is that people would park all day. I realize you put it in the motion about the posted time limits, but I just want to know, is that going to be a strain on bylaw because I'm concerned about it because that's exactly the problem we had was people parking all day and taking up space and we don't know who's going to park there. And so this could be an open invitation if we're not careful. So how do we prevent that?
The staff?
Clicking. I was clicking. Mr. Mayor, Roger Chapman's on the line, so I'd ask Roger if he can comment on that, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The same officers that would be assigned to those areas for enforcement of the pan display will remain in those areas. So as we receive complaints, the officers will respond to complaints of improperly parked vehicles, blocked laneways, things like that. And in addition to, we will proactively chalk to ensure that there is a turnover of parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And of course, we still want to encourage people to use transit as much as possible. So I hope that people will be using the transit option, which from the motion from councillor McKenney and Hubley, because that will help a lot more in terms of this issue. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while I strongly supported the other motions that help out businesses, I do have some concerns about this one. I'm not sure how it's going to help. I'll just take Bank Street as an example. So Bank Street is already free parking Saturday, Sunday evening, so with no restrictions. So it does mean, in fact, that, you know, this is only during the day, and I believe that to be the case in this entirety. Not sure that people in Centertown are looking for free parking at this time. Like, it's a bit sensitive. And so I just wonder, I'll go back to Mr. Chapman. There really are no time restrictions then during the day, say on Bank Street. If there are none on weekends and evenings, are there actual restrictions for how long someone can park on Bank Street during the day?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the councillor's correct, Saturdays and Sundays. Bank Street specifically between Wellington and Catherine, there are no time limit restrictions on Saturdays and Sundays, and those are currently free parking during those days. There are some free parking in the market as well on Saturdays and Sundays. During the week, Monday to Friday, the three-hour time limit would still apply. So you know, we could be chalking to encourage turnover parking spaces during most times.
Yeah, fair enough, but it's a lot of work to ensure that people who are, I don't know, coming down to work in the area, whatever, just don't take up the spot for the day. And it is, just, I just don't see, I just don't see, I guess I just don't understand, given the context and everything else that we're doing to support businesses, which I greatly and strongly support, how this is really going to have any positive impact. And given that Centertown residents just dealt with thousands of vehicles illegally parked for over three weeks, and the fact that we already have free parking Saturdays, Sundays and evenings when most people most people are coming down anyway to to do their shopping. The reason we have, you know, meter parking on these streets is to ensure that 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 the turnover is there for people who are coming down to actually shop or, you know, taking a meal or whatever, you know, lunch during the day. So I I'm I'm not sure that I'm gonna, I'm not going to be able to support this one. I'm not sure that it was that I understand really how it will actually benefit benefit businesses. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Menard, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, is there an estimated cost for this? It's supposed to last the month, is there a cost figure that staff have indicated?
It's seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars on the third to last paragraph.
Seven hundred and fifty five thousand. Hey, that's quite a lot. Is there a map of where it would be? I saw the roads indicated, is there is there something you can visually show where where we're talking about?
Mr. Chapman or Gonsey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, there's not a map, but the motion does specify the the limits. In essence, it's between Bronson and Queen Elizabeth Drive. Gladstone is basically the southern limits right to Wellington, plus it includes part of the market up to Murray Street. We can certainly, if this goes out, certainly we will produce a map just to make sure that it's clear for for residents.
Yeah, it's helpful to get that visually there, the the other roads that I was hearing names, didn't visually bring that up, but what you just said clarifies it for me, so thank you. Is it going to be applying to residential areas as well? Would it apply in areas where people park in the residential, where there's either charged parking or just timed parking?
Mayor, this would apply to basically any on street or surface lots, city surface lots within those areas. If there's no pay and display, then basically whatever parking regulations would continue to apply.
Okay. One of the big issues residents have raised, certainly in my areas, is during the pandemic, they've been home for two years. And that they don't have, you know, they're they're parking outside their homes if they if they have to, and there's been a concern raised there, I know we previously exempted that in that way, but this doesn't seem to apply in in that case to residents that are that are staying home. And my concern, my main concern here is is residents, the cost of this as well, I think could be better utilized. I I'm not hearing a big call for more free parking. In fact, it doesn't support businesses at all, that the the evidence is against that. It's free parking doesn't actually help. People aren't usually making that choice of that three fifty or not to go visit a business. And of course, we know that people in in this area in particular are very in favor of more walking and biking and transit use, not more kind of idling and car traffic. And so, you know, I think it's important that we speak to the goals of our transportation master plan of our official plan. And this this motion is kind of going against that, right? And so we're, we we really need to, I think, reevaluate what's actually going to help residents and businesses in this case. And this this motion for the cost of it doesn't doesn't do it. So, you know, I I think throughout North America, the world, it's been shown pedestrians, bicyclists, scooters in those spaces, spending more, shopping more. And that's the type of behavior we need to to encourage in this case. For every dollar a driver spends on driving, it costs a city nearly nine dollars. The city pays a dollar for every dollar spent by a transit rider. You know, pedestrians and cyclists basically reduce our costs every time we can induce that type of behavior. So I think, you know, for the sake of our our businesses, that seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars could go a long way for vouchers and for residents in the area that maybe want to access these services rather than something like this, which likely will have very minimal effect on actual induce inducing business, visiting businesses. So I just say that money could be better spent and I I won't be supporting the motion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, well, I won't be supporting the motion either, I think it's well intended but misguided. We're in a climate emergency, we have been spending a lot of taxpayer money on building a world class transit system to encourage transit ridership and alternative modes of transportation. Offering free parking on all of our city streets in the downtown core is really encouraging car use. And that is really mixing the message to the public that we shouldn't be mixing. I I understand that businesses have been hard hit and I understand that, you know, there's good intentions behind the motion, but I don't believe that this is the best approach. If anything, if anything at all, I would say limit it to parking garages, but not all of the downtown streets in the city core. So I don't know if the move of the motion would at least entertain an amendment to limit limiting it to parking garages, but I think that would at least be reasonable. The cost of seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, I believe that money could be better spent elsewhere to support the downtown businesses and those hardest hit by the occupation of our city. But I I don't believe this is the best use of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and to similar comments, I believe the spirit of the motion is to get people downtown and to other neighborhoods that have been hard hit by not just the occupation, but even by the pandemic. And we should all be looking at ways to get people to come down that that are successful, but actually don't compete against our billion dollar public transit system where we've just said will be free for at least thirty days. I have time with bylaw, spending their valuable time chalking tires in parking garages, that really doesn't make sense to me. Bylaw is overwhelmed and and their attention needs to be elsewhere. And I think that in many other jurisdictions, even some businesses in other cities will say, we'll cover your parking, and I'm not suggesting that the businesses cover the parking, but it would make sense that we we cap the amount of time, maybe the first two hours. And then if you exceed two hours, you pay, but at least that's the draw for some people. I I think the greatest flaw in the motion is this. We just passed a motion to invest in our BIAs and they're going to have to go through an application process where they, you know, explain how those monies are going to be used, if there's going to be certain criteria. That money won't be available this month, that's going to take at least a month. This motion before us says for the next month, the month of March, the parking will be available. So one, it's not the best time of year to draw people out to come. And secondly, the the campaigns that the BIAs are going to be immersed in won't have started yet. And so you really want to try and coordinate those campaigns with free parking if council endorses this motion. So I don't think the month of March is the best time to do that. If you are going to forego seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, do it at the time where you can maximize the number of people to come down there. But I I just think we need to do everything we can to get people on our public transit. It's a billion, multi billion dollar investment. We consistently talk about at the Transit Commission a lack of plan to exponentially increase our ridership over time, which has been decimated because of the pandemic. And I think that the the merits or at least the sentiment of this motion is positive, how do we get people into these communities? But I don't want to approve something that directly competes against public transit where we just approved a motion to offset a million dollars in that regard. So I appreciate the motion, but as well, I I will not be supporting it today. Thank you.
Thanks councillor, councillor Gower, please. Sir Gower, I think you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I hope you could hear me, I'm having some internet issues here. But I wanted to ask staff, what have we heard from BIAs or other economic development partners? Would this be useful to them? Have we asked, have we had requests from them?
Sir Willis.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we're just checking with staff to understand what was said. The the BIAs have not have asked for any possible means to bring people back downtown and they gave us a list of options. I the, some businesses have flagged this to us specifically, I just can't answer the question whether or not it was the BIA or businesses approached it, but businesses did approach us with this request.
I I will say, I appreciate the the comments from fellow councillors, I just don't think this is the time to be dogmatic about parking policy and overall philosophy on parking. I I wanted to have supported this if there wasn't the free transit motion that we just passed earlier. But I think what we're trying to do is just take away any barrier, any hesitation that someone might have about going downtown right now. And I'll tell you from the perspective of residents in Stittsville, just free transit, they might still consider parking to be a barrier if there wasn't an incentive for parking, maybe not having to pay a transit fare or not having to pay a parking cost, maybe that's a little bit extra money that gets thrown into the the tip jar for the restaurants. And you know, if somebody parks in a parking garage for six hours on Saturday and spend six hours shopping in the Byward Market, going out for lunch, going out to many stores, that's a benefit to bring people back downtown. So I I support this and I encourage colleagues to as well.
Thank you. Let's get this other comment down.
Other comments?
Gower for the motion. We had a similar example when when we provided no charge parking at the City Hall Garage when Elgin Street was under. Oops, I see two other people have spoken, so I'll withdraw mine and councillor Eggly.
Mr. Mayor, I think councillor Meehan had her hand up before I did, so I'll I'll cede to her.
Councillor Meehan.
Thank you councillor Eggly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too respect the spirit of this motion. I'm just wondering if the timing is 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 correct right now. I think that with the free transit and the fact that, you know, March is a month where a lot of people are away. I'm just wondering if we can just wait on this, see how it would impact the free transit has and then study it a little bit more and maybe bring it in at a time where there's going to be a lot more people who would like to take advantage of it. I understand that the we're looking at every option in order to increase business traffic downtown, but I I'm not sure that March is the ideal month to do this. So that's really the only reservation that I have about this motion. But the intent is 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 absolutely great, but I would wait a little bit and see how the transit and other measures that we're bringing in, what effect they have on increasing business downtown. Don't discount this motion, but maybe today is not the the time, the absolute perfect time to bring this in. So that's the only reservation I have, so I'll just leave it there, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Eggly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a a question for the mover, a question was posed earlier and I'm not sure, I think we're all having internet troubles today. I'm not sure I heard heard a response, but I I believe councillor Deans asked whether it would be a friendly amendment to limit the motion to parking garages only. And I'm not, I'm not, if an answer was given and I missed it, I apologize, but if it hasn't been, I'd like to hear from the mover on that particular, because that would seem to take into account some of the concerns raised by area councillors around parking on the streets and at the same time welcome people from Stittsville, for example, to come down and support the local businesses. So if you've answered already councillor Tierney, I'm sorry I missed it, and and if you didn't, I'd like to hear your your answer on that, please.
Great, thank you councillor Eggly. Yeah, I am having spotty issues here today for sure. I've just been asking some questions of staff on certain items. And again, when staff brought this forward, the whole idea was to help businesses. And it's great, we're having a good policy discussion here, of course, we all support transit, think it's very critical. I will keep working with staff right now and during wrap up will determine what's what. And if I can see that as a friendly amendment, certainly we want the garages in right away, I think that is critical. But the additional spots, what the impacts would be and what the cost would be as well, and just pass that information. And towards the end of wrap up, councillor Eggly, if that's good with you also have those answers.
I just think we should have it on the table before we vote, that whether that that compromise, if you will, is satisfactory to you and staff. So thank you for that.
Terrific, thank you.
Councillor.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and I support the motion, but I I think the spirit of many of these motions is to unite council and to make sure that we can all support downtown businesses. So I would be of the same mindset as councillor Eggly. And maybe with the amended motion, we can get a unanimous support here if it's in relations to making lots. There's no one's debated free lots, City Hall, City Lots on the Market, Bank Street. And I think then that removes the on street pressures that might be caused by the lack of turnover or issues of payment. Because colleagues, I'm going to get the calls, there's going to be people that are parked two hours, not making, not moving and they're going to get a ticket for what they think is a free, a free environment. So I I I was willing to do that work with my 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 team. But if if I, we can get council united behind one vote, which is, let's get those lots free and at the same time do transit free. Maybe we can use the additional pay and display component and make and make the 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 lots that are in transit there where councillor Gower was raising, right? Where residents from the outskirts of town drive in to the, I'm sorry, I miss, the name's escaping me. The the Park and Ride, yeah, the Parks, the Parks and Ride for for free environment for those periods too. I wonder if that could be maybe an alternative position. So I don't want to mess up with the motion, I'm I'm just agreeing with the essence of those who've spoken, that I think the lots are a win for us. I think the on street sort of have a variety of feelings towards it. And and for me as a local councillor, I can highlight that I, and Roger would know that we would get complaints for folks who would get tickets in a free environment and then that would minimize what we're trying to do here, maybe.
Okay, councillor Curry. I'm just wondering, just before councillor Curry speaks, is there, I want to find out if there's a consensus to at least start with the the garages, I'm just trying to recall how many garages there are in the area. There's basically two in the market. In Centertown, there are how many, Mr. Gonsey?
Mr. Mayor, the there's six that are identified in the motion, so those are the six garages and surface lots that would be applicable.
So would this also include, maybe there's the consensus to include the the surface lots as well as the buildings? Is there agreement on that by colleagues?
I accept that.
Councillor Tierney, is that a friendly amendment?
It is, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Basically change the motion to include only those surface lots that have a pay and display, obviously, and the parking structures. Councillor Caitlin is going to reflect that, so we'll we'll go back to councillor Curry while we wait for that amendment that councillor Tierney says is friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that there's enough discussion here, though, that simply reflecting that maybe this needs a little more thinking. I I support the motion in general, I think that councillor Meehan made a very good point because if if we do everything at once, you know, maybe then that, there's only this short stint where we encourage everyone to go back downtown. But maybe if we spread it out a little bit and have, you know, you know, transportation by bus is, you know, here's a benefit for this month. And then April, April's not great weather either, then we have free parking in our lots. You know, I think that there, maybe we're just seeing that this takes a little bit more thought, but I I do support it. And the other thing is, the beginning of this meeting, all we heard was, we want to hear from what the community wants. And if the business community is saying that they want this, this was on their list of things, then I think we have to respect that part of it. It's just a matter of how. So I think there's been a lot of valuable comments here, understanding that it's, you know, everyone likes the spirit of it, but maybe it isn't well, not not well thought out, but fully thought out. So I would just say that I would consider the timing of it all as well as councillor Meehan has said.
Okay, so we're just working on getting the wording up for councillor Tierney and Gower. Just to comment, I was starting my remarks by indicating that the last time we had this kind of a no charge arrangement was for the City Hall Garage as a result of the massive rebuilding and revi- arrangement was for the City Hall Garage as a result of the massive rebuilding and revitalizing Elgin Street. And I know a number of merchants, particularly the restaurant industry, were very grateful that, I think it was councillor McKenney and I brought forward the motion, if I'm not mistaken, to provide that option because the street was really a disaster zone. You know, there's no, there was two lanes, no parking anywhere. So I'm quite happy to support the compromise that a number of you have talked about. I think this, just to be very clear though, the business community through COBIA, the Ottawa Coalition of Business Improvement Areas, that was high on their list was to waive the parking fees. Because one member of council said this is not the best time of year. I would suggest you, at the end of an occupation that shut our city down for four weeks, on top of a worldwide pandemic, this is the time. Because they lost a lot of business during the Christmas season, the Boxing Day season. We need to get people back into the downtown core as quickly as possible. And if we remove some of the barriers, such as no-charge transit for that period, as well as the parking fee, because some people will have to, to drive and park and shop and, and so on. So I think it is the best time of the year because these people are suffering greatly and we need to get people into their shops and into their restaurants as quickly as possible as they struggle with everything from their taxes to their rent, to their, their payroll. So if I can ask the city clerk to bring forward the motion. And I think councillor Tierney, if you want to just read that so members of the public have a chance to hear it.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Therefore, be resolved that the city provide free parking in all city-owned surface parking lots in the downtown core within the area of Bronson Avenue, Gladstone Avenue, Queen Elizabeth Drive, Wellington Street and the Byward Market between Sussex Drive, Rito Street, King Edward Street and Murray Street, beginning Friday, February 25th and ending Thursday, March 31st. And that the city provide free parking at the city-owned parking lots located in the same areas at 210 Gloucester Street, 234 to 250 Slater Street, 422 Slater Street, 78 Clarence, 142 Clarence, 110 Laurier Avenue, Friday, February 25th, ending Thursday, March 31st. Therefore, be resolved that the loss of parking revenue is estimated now at $380,000. As a result, in the year-end net loss will be covered by the Parking Reserve Fund reported through 2022 Parking Services Annual Report. And I'm not sure, Caitlin, if that is the end of the motion or not.
Yeah, that, that's the end of what changed.
Wonderful, thank you.
So councillor Flurry, did you have a comment on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if it could stay on the screen, I, I just proposed that we strip the first three, four sentence, three, four lines that speak to specific streets. Because we actually named the lots below, I think it, it might be, appear to be a little confusing, just my suggestion here.
Does that, to staff, does that include surface lots? Because that was part of what I had brought forward, surface and structures.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the description for the lots include both service lots and the garages. So the, the councillor is correct.
I'm okay with what's reflected on the screen now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, so on the motion, carried?
Read over. Carried.
Descent by?
Brockington.
Councillor Brockington.
McKenney.
Yays and nays, we'll do yays and nays then.
Councillor O'Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor DeRusse?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Conseil Cucci?
Me.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Meehan?
No.
Councillor Curry?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
No.
Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas, councillor Flurry?
Wait.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Sixteen yays, seven nays.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Flurry, seconded by councillor King with respect to jurisdictional working group. Councillor Flurry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wonder if, okay, here we go, thank you, Kevin. Whereas Ottawa is the capital of Canada, whereas Ottawa is one of the country's largest cities, take pride in being a second home for all Canadians. Whereas Ottawa welcomes Canadians and international visitors as a key characteristics of our capital city, identify and as an important economic driver. And whereas recent world events have incited an uprising of political extremism and posed new threats to our national capital that are beyond our municipal's ability to solely plan, support and finance. Whereas an illegal occupation overtook Ottawa's downtown core for more than 21 days from January 28th to 22 February 20th. And whereas during this time, the complexity of the occupation proved to demand more policing resources than the Ottawa Police Services could provide. And whereas this situation caused OPS to resort to pulling officers from neighbourhoods, leaving local communities vulnerable. And whereas the Ottawa Police Service and the City of Ottawa's first responsibility must be to serve and protect Ottawa residents and businesses. And whereas the ultimate dismantling of the occupation required integrated policing efforts from multiple policing organisation. And whereas this example of an unruly illegal operation demonstrated gaps in jurisdiction, complexity in decision-making and multi-service requirements, including paramedics, fire, road services, snow removal, waste management, et cetera. Whereas the local property tax base residents and businesses should not be required to finance activities relating to being a nation's capital, nation, national capital beyond the reasonable responsibilities of a municipality. Therefore, be resolved that city council request that the Government of Canada establish a working group of elected officials from all three levels of government, senior agencies, including PSPC, the National Capital Commission, and indigenous leaders, to propose a plan to modernise the needs and responsibilities of Ottawa's jurisdictional, jurisdiction as a capital city. A, remove the financial burden of national events from residents and businesses in Ottawa and B, renew and redefine the city, City of Ottawa's capital responsibilities and clarify the roles of multi-jurisdictional authorities. And be it further resolved that this working group report back to city council and all Ottawa members of provincial and federal parliament with the working group's preliminary findings by July 1st, 2022. And this, Mr. Mayor, is, although councillor King and I are moving, it's been a number of conversations with colleagues. And I want to thank councillor Kits and councillor Gower specifically for, for proposing changes to the motion, which is in front of, which is in front of my study.
Merci, conseil, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I, I do believe that there are a number of issues that do require greater review. And I'm not sure this motion, as worded, touches upon everything, but it's certainly a start. And so I want to ask the city manager for his comments on, given the last whereas statement, I'll just read it, that the property tax base should not be required to finance activities related to being a national capital beyond reasonable responses of municipality. I completely agree with that, that, you know, normal protests that we see in the city, that should be handled by our local police service. But when you get basically a national protest, which is what we just had this month, another larger protest because we are the capital city, there should be a greater share or burden of that, of defence. So to the city manager, does this motion say what it needs to say?
Mr. Mayor, the more, I, I find the motion actually very fascinating because right now, I believe Ottawa Police receives in the order of $3 million from the federal government to support the recognition that we're in the nation's capital. We have special events and, and protests here that the local police service has to deal with. And it's always been my belief that the national capital region is, is unique compared to any other city in the country with respect to the focus and what we just saw recently, which was, I think, the extreme. But who knows how that will happen in the future? And my view is that, and maybe the, the, you know, the inquiry will, will bring that out. But I, I think that there has to be a rethinking of the national capital region and its security as a city. And it has to go beyond what Ottawa Police and the City of Ottawa can provide. I think what we saw here is that when we break out of our normal response mechanisms, when you look at the, 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 an issue that, or something that happens that is infrequent and doesn't happen often, it tests the normal connections that happen between the federal government, the province and the city. And what ends up happening is you, you end up with a lag with respect to how quickly the various organisations have to get engaged, getting, actually get engaged. Because you have to reconnect those relationships very quickly and there's always a time lag before that happens. And my view is that in the national capital region, we should have a permanency in terms of an emergency plan involving all three levels of government to deal with the broader issues that may happen here in the future. I've always felt that. We saw that when we had the Corporal Serrival shooting, where there was a response by police, but it was a, a very stressful, difficult day in terms of communication, in terms of coordination, in terms of bringing in all the, all the various level, level of, levels of government, the players. I was in the, I was the leading that day in the, the city AOC. And I found it very frustrating to make the connection points with who we needed to talk to that day to deal with the emergency. And the events of the last month, to me, again, validated in my mind that we need to be rethinking, and not just on the Ottawa side. Gatineau is also a key player on this and the bridges and what happens on that side. And Gatineau is often let, left, left out of the conversations in many ways. And I don't think they should be. There's, you know, 300,000, 400,000 people on that side who come into Ottawa every day to work. A lot of those people come into work. So my view is if, you know, that, this motion, if it's leading to a discussion about the national capital region and how the national capital region responds to emergencies that are greater than the local, what the local police can handle, we need to put a formalized structures and understandings and agreements with the other levels of government and the security agencies that comes together in an instant to be able to deal with whatever happens on the ground, rather than trying to figure that out while we're in the, while we're in the emergency. And I think that's a big gap that we have in the national capital region, quite frankly.
I, I really appreciate that. You will probably recall when Chief Slowly spoke about jurisdiction. It was basically City of Ottawa was under his jurisdiction. City of Ottawa roads, including Wellington, were under his jurisdiction, despite this was more or less a, a national protest in scope. And the numbers were protesting basically federal and provincial policy and not any beef with the City of Ottawa or the City of Ottawa Corporation. We just happen to be the national capital. So joint command, there needs to be a better explanation of who does what. And I think an expansion, a shared expansion of, of that scope. But does the motion get to that? Part B talks about the City of Ottawa, it is silent on the Ottawa Police Service. So again, Mr. City Manager, does the motion say what it needs to say? Or does it need to be refined to ensure what you just said is actually incorporated?
Mr. Mayor, if the motion go back up, somebody, I don't have it in my, I was just reading it on the screen. I saw it before, but I can't just locate it in my, in my pile. If the clerk could put it up again, in the last part in particular, that would be helpful.
Does the City of Ottawa have a role to play? Absolutely. But I think the Ottawa Police Service needs to be mentioned. I know it's being covered off through other motions, but do we not also need to mention it in this motion?
Yes, I think that, I think it's not only, it's not only the city, but when you look at the, the, the people who were involved in responding to this, you have the parliamentary protective services, which are a key player in terms of what happens on the grounds of Parliament Hill in particular. So they can't be left out. The RCMP have a role because of S Jam and all the other things and their support of what's happening in, in the parliamentary precinct. You've also got Ottawa Police who are involved. You've got the public safety organisations and various other, and various other federal government departments that are involved in this, including the, the province. I think that my preference would be that, I don't think this goes far enough in terms of capturing the request and shaping the request that we would ask the federal government initially about who should be in a working group and what the, what the terms of reference should be in the working group. I think it's a good start and I know what the councillor is trying to get to and I was very happy to see it. But I think if we're truly to get there, we need to be talking about not just elected officials, but you need also public officials, the bureaucracy from those various organisations to create a, to rethink what would be the, the security posture and framework for the national capital region in a formalized structure in terms of reference perspective going forward? And how would we work together, get, come together, call all the things? How do we, how do we activate that emergency response from all, all levels of government? And I don't think this goes far enough, quite frankly, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm wondering councillor Flurry, given the, the city manager's comment, could we move this as a notice of motion and it gives you and the city manager an opportunity to work together to bring it back to the next council meeting? Because it's always on the fly.
Mr. Mayor, I thought the recommendations were very helpful and I'm glad to make them. So if, if you're okay, we'll put this as notice. And if members of council want to reach out, I'll certainly be working with Stephen with these points here. I think it's, we want to do this once, do it right. And I hope there's consensus on this when it comes back.
Yeah, I think that makes sense and I think the city manager is okay. Gives you another two weeks to get feedback from colleagues and, and staff. So we'll just withdraw this and put it as a notice of motion on this agenda. I thank Caitlin for that suggestion. Okay, next is also by councillor Flurry. Ottawa Love, councillor Flurry and councillor Egli, councillor Flurry, please.
And I want to thank councillor Egli, who, constituents of councillor Egli did raise this to our attention. And I thought, you know what? Usually councillors do an event during Valentine's Day at the Ottawa Mission. And I thought, okay, what, what can we do here to really support local businesses, but also share the flair of our city? So I, I wonder if Caitlin, if you could put it on the screen. It's basically a redo of Valentine's Day, where Ottawa is healing from the recent downtown occupation, which overran the heart of our city for three weeks. And whereas there is, there was a significant impact to Ottawa businesses, specifically in the Byward Market, Rito Spark and Bank Street, where we're forced to close and remain closed throughout the duration of the occupation. Whereas the occupation of our downtown had, had significant impacts on the mental health and wellbeing of residents. Whereas Valentine's Day 2022 in Ottawa was not the same for downtown businesses, their staff and residents because of the occupation. Whereas Valentine's Day serves as an opportunity to gather with loved ones, enjoy winter activities and support local businesses. Whereas employees and businesses were forced to close during the occupation already on the heels of recovering from the economic impact of the pandemic. Whereas our heart-shaped city needs a little love. And whereas Ottawa Tourism has launched a hashtag Ottawa Love in an effort to share what we love about this great city. Therefore, be it resolved that City of Ottawa redo Valentine's Day by declaring March 14th, 2022 Valentine's Day in Ottawa.
Councillor Egli?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's scroll late. Therefore, be it further resolved that the city communication and economic development staff work with local BIAs, Ottawa Tourism to promote and encourage a shop, stay and dine local and show Ottawa's downtown a little extra, hashtag Ottawa Love during the weekend leading up to and on March 14th, 2022.
Great, thank you councillor Egli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank my constituent for coming up with this idea and, and for councillor Flurry embracing it wholeheartedly, no pun intended. I just think it, it shows that all of the city, all of the residents, regardless of where they live. where they live, are concerned for what happened in the core, concerned what happened to our city, and, and all want to pull together to, to bring some positivity back to the city, some positivity back to the core, support the businesses. So I don't suspect anybody's going to vote against this, but, but I, but if you're even considering it, I would, I would urge you to, you know, look in your heart and, and vote in support of this, because I, I think it's, it's, it's a positive story and, and it'll help our businesses as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried, adoptee?
Carried.
Next motion, also from councillor Flurry and seconded by myself, with respect to Team Canada and the Winter Olympic Games. Councillor Flurry is our sports commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for all the motions. As you can see, there's a lot of work with colleagues and on my team to, to be here today. If I could have it on the screen, I want to thank yourself, I want to thank councillor Moffitt and councillor Tierney for working with us on this. Whereas the Beijing Olympics took place from February 4th to February 20th, 2022, whereas the, whereas Ottawa had more than sixteen local athletes, including Yvonne Blande, Mike Evelyn, Cody Sorensen, Mike Evelyn, Rachel Holman, Dawn McEwen, Mason Akavish, John Morris, Eric O'Donnell, Mimi Reneva, Jamie Lee Retray, Hannah Smith, Jared Smith, Lisa Weagle, Isabel Weidman, Antoine Sieve, Valérie Grenier from Saint Isidore, Catherine Stuart Jones, and Laura Leclerc, representing Canada at the Olympics. Whereas during the same period, our athletes proudly represented our city and country, the City of Ottawa was taking siege by a group who occupied our downtown core for more than twenty days. Whereas this stressful time for resident, for Ottawa residents improperly pulled our attention away for, from our local athletes. Whereas Ottawa's, whereas, as Ottawa Sport Commissioner, my role is to support our communities throughout, through the power of sports and physical literacy. And whereas this role includes bringing sports organizations, staff, members, volunteers, and all those who ensure sport play is available for all and continue to grow. Whereas Ottawa's sport community is proud, athletes and teens regularly representing our city, province and country by bearing our national flag with pride. And whereas the use of the Canadian flag is improperly used on trucks, signs and camps by those who supported the illegal occupation these past three weeks. Whereas Isabel Weidman, who is a local three-time medalist and Team Canada flag bearer at the closing ceremony of the 2022 Beijing Winter Olympics, therefore be it resolved that council requests, that city staff, sport commissioner, work with local sport partners, including the Ottawa Sport Council, OSEG, Ottawa Senators, the Ottawa GGS, the Ravens and Ottawa local sports clubs to organize a welcome home event for our local athletes, their families and the City of Ottawa, which will allow residents to celebrate Team Canada's accomplishments at the Beijing 2022 Olympics and wave the flag proudly once again.
Great, thank you, and thank you as well as councillor, the councillors that you had mentioned for bringing this forward, because I think most of us were probably glued to the television set, not watching the Olympics during the occupation, obviously. And, you know, these athletes who train for years, sometimes decades, to make it to that elite athlete status, we didn't realize, you know, how, how well our team Ottawa did in Beijing. Quite remarkable, the number of medals and best performances, and I think our biggest challenge with this suggestion is getting them all together in one place because they go off to the World Cup Series and so on. But we'll do our very best to get them all to come and allow the public to say thank you for representing our country and for your athleticism and for the great work that you've done. So thank you, councillor Flurry, for bringing the motion forward. Carried, adoptee?
Carried.
Next is councillor Flurry, signed by councillor Kavanaugh with respect to lost income programs. Councillor Flurry, please.
And, and Mayor, for some colleagues, it might sound redundant as we had passed a very similar motion, but there's been no actions provincially or on the fact that many have not received wages through the closure of businesses. So I'm renewing a call here from council, an urgent call for us to, to inform the provincial and federal government. So this is about loss of income. Whereas the City of Ottawa declared a state of emergency on February 6th, 2022 in response to the illegal occupation of Ottawa's downtown. Whereas this occupation took over Ottawa's downtown core for more than twenty-two days. Whereas during these twenty-two days of this illegal occupation, businesses such as those in the Rito Centre were forced to close their doors for an unprecedented period of time. Whereas this closure impacted not only businesses, but the employees who count on shift work for wages to live. Whereas the federal government announced funding for businesses who were affected by the illegal occupation. Whereas the eligibility of criteria has not yet been defined by the federal government for businesses who applied for funding through this new grant program coordinated by Invest Ottawa. Whereas the pandemic already created an unpressed, unpredictable work environment for employees who depend on shift works as a, as a source of income. Whereas the occupation created a new uncalled-for level of stress on these employees who were not paid during the twenty-two days of occupation. The siege our city, therefore be it resolved that the mayor, with the support of city council, make a formal request to the provincial government to match the federal Ottawa Business Relief Program funding to cover fixed costs and sales shortfalls for occupation period of January 28th to February 22nd. And be it further resolved that the mayor write to the provincial and federal government on behalf of city council to expand the lost of income programs, EI, SERD or others urgently to reflect the lost wages by employees during the occupation period of January 28th, 28th to February 22nd, 2022.
Okay, councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you to my colleague for bringing this motion forward, which I was happy to second. I really appreciate the other motions in terms of being, helping out the businesses in this area. We have to remember that the workers live all over the place, they live in all our wards, and they were not able to go to work. So they were frozen out of incomes because they worked at the Rito Centre or any of those small businesses that are throughout this area, and it's been very, very hard on them. And I've heard from people in this situation, and I imagine most of us have, so I think we have to remember to, to look at, at workers particularly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillors. On the motion, carried, adoptee?
Carried.
We have a direction to staff by, on this item by councillor Flurry. Councillor?
And I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I feel like I have a lot of work that led to this here. So given the significant impact on the illegal occupation of our city, that staff be directed to, one, review the city's purchasing and procurement capacity for tow trucks, two, report back to council on the feasibility of installing retractable electric bollards at strategic areas in the map attached and play, in place of current placed checkpoints. This review is to include identifying strategic locations, estimated cost of installation, and complete a feasibility study. And three, to conduct an evaluation with the Human Needs Task Force and report back to council on the specific gaps that were identified during this occupation period. The scope of this evaluation is to include, but is not limited to, gaps in the city provided social services, childcare, access to transit, to name two, gaps from the community service providers relating to seniors and those experiencing homelessness.
Okay, that's a direction to staff, agreed? Thank you. Next is Committee on Social Services, reports, service social community accountability agreements with Ontario Health, entende responsabilization avec santé Ontario. Carried?
Carried.
Postponements and deferrals. Finance and Economic Development Committee, report number thirty-four deferred from the city council meeting of February 9th. Rapport numéro trente-quatre de comité des finances et de développement économique rapporté de la réunion du conseil municipal de neuf février vingt-deux. Item three, the waiver of real property policy and transfer of previously declared surplus land part of 3380 Chalkville Road. Carried?
Carried.
Next item, committee reports, rapport des comités, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report 24A, rapport numéro vingt-quatre A, de sous-comité de patrimoine bâti. Councillor King, you have a motion, signed by councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, your worship, and just waiting for the item to come on the screen. Whereas at its, at his meeting of February 8th, 2022, the Built Heritage Subcommittee recommended refusal of the application. And whereas the staff recommendation as approved by the Built Heritage Subcommittee on this matter references consideration by the planning committee, and this matter is now directly before council, therefore be it resolved that council approve the following as a substitute recommendation, being the staff recommendation as approved by the Built Heritage Subcommittee without reference to the planning committee, that council refuse the application for new construction at 480 Cloverdale Road according to plans prepared by Linebox Studios received on January 31st, 2022 and attached as document six to ten.
Okay, so on this motion, carried?
Designed.
Designed by councillor Moffitt.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, next is item five, application to alter 619 Manor Avenue, a property designated on part five of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Rockcliffe Park Heritage Conservation District. Carried, adoptee?
Carried.
Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried?
Carried.
You had a notice of motion, but I believe there'd be consensus to have it moved up to be dealt with now, so I apologize, I
No, that's okay. I wasn't sure how you were going to handle that procedurally, so.
It, it, it falls under the, the issue that we, the other six or seven motions, so the floor is yours to introduce your motion as opposed to a notice of motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly explain to colleagues, I had intended this as notice of motion, but in some discussion with Mayor's office, it was agreed that we would waive it on today and, and have it dealt with. So if I could have it back up on the screen, I will read it out, people at home and colleagues. Whereas the Government of Canada has significant buildings north and south of Wellington Street, being part of the Parliamentary District. And whereas there have been security concerns about car and heavy vehicle traffic on Wellington following security incidents in 1989, 2015, and with the recent illegal occupation of the street by protesters. And whereas the STO is studying a tram connection from Gatineau to downtown Ottawa with Wellington Street being one of two quarter options, and the National Capital Commission has been direct, has been directed by the federal government to lead the planning for interprovincial transit connections to Gatineau. Therefore be it resolved that the Director of Traffic Services be instructed to report back to Transportation Committee on the feasibility and cost of implementing a temporary closure of Wellington Street between east of Bank and west of Elgin Street until the end of 2022, in consultation with federal officials, OC Transpo, STO, Ottawa Police Services, Ottawa Fire and Paramedic Services, and that the current closure of Wellington Street by the Ottawa Police Service not be reopened until such a time that this report is brought forward to Transportation Committee. Two, the General Manager of Planning, Real Estate and Economic Development, in consultation with the General Manager of Public Works, be authorized to enter into discussions with federal officials regarding the possibility of closing Wellington Street between Bank Street and Elgin Street to all vehicles except public transit and active transportation. Three, the General Manager of PRED, in consultation with the General Manager of Public Works, be authorized to review the potential to close O'Connor Street and Metcalf Street north of Queen Street to motor, motorize traffic with appropriate consultation with local businesses and residents, with frontage on Spark Street, O'Connor and Metcalf and the Spark Street Business Improvement Area. Four, the General Manager of PRED, in consultation with the General Manager of Public Works, be further authorized to enter into discussions with federal officials regarding the transfer of Wellington Street into federal ownership, provided appropriate easements for city infrastructure are preserved. Five, that the General Managers of PRED and Public Works are directed to bring the estimated one-time and ongoing cost for temporary closures, technical studies and legal support to undertake this work to Transportation Committee and council for approval at the earliest opportunity.
So councillor, I'll just interrupt for a moment, because councillor Brockington has a declaration of interest. Councillor Brockington on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I, councillor Riley Brockington, Riverward, declare a potential indirect pecuniary interest on a motion regarding the closure of Wellington Street to vehicular traffic as I attend St. Andrews Presbyterian Church located at 82 Kent at Wellington and a member, or sorry, an elder of the session, which is the governing body of the church, and the church may be financially impacted by any contemplated closure.
Okay, so if you could step away, and councillor McKennie, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor and colleagues. I mean, this has been an ongoing discussion for some time, Wellington and what to do with Wellington to make it a better, a better space, a better public space certainly, and given the recent security incidents, a safer space. So what this does is, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't commit us to anything, but it does ask staff to, you know, consider what a temporary closure would look like, that is in place today, however truncated somewhat. We're looking at between Bank and, and Elgin, east of Bank, so there would still be access to, to the hill for employees of the hill going straight up Bank, and it would still allow for the movement of transit on Lion and Kent. It would also ensure that there aren't greater impacts west, that on Booth Street and other local streets, with the, you know, with Kent and Lion remaining open to vehicular traffic. And then it does, again, you know, direct the, the general managers to, to work with federal officials about the, the possibility of closing them permanently, what that would look like. You know, I hear from people all the time, you know, is it, is it bollards that go in and out? We certainly, you know, want to ensure that whatever is done here is done, done well, but it, it has to be done in consultation with, with our, our federal partners. And then it does also consider the entering into discussions regarding the transfer of Wellington Street into federal ownership. And that certainly was an issue that contributed to what we saw over the past three and a half weeks when vehicles were allowed to come onto Wellington Park. And the entire, the, 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 the entire responsibility really fell to the city to defend and protect Wellington Street and everything south. So it, it does look at, it does ask staff also to look at transferring Wellington Street and making that entire parliamentary precinct federal responsibility. So again, it's, just want to emphasize that this doesn't commit, commit us to anything, but it does provide staff with the direction to, to work with federal partners to make this part of our city much better functioning and certainly ensuring that transit continues to be a part of, part of that, and of course, active transportation, which is, which is critical to the health and vibrancy of, of our city. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you, councillor, and just a couple of quick comments. I think every time there's been a security breach on Parliament Hill, it's acted as a catalyst for change. And I recall, I think councillor Kavanaugh certainly was up on the hill at that point with the bus hijerin, maybe councillor McKennie was as well, but it acted as a catalyst, because I remember I remember bringing my parents to go and see the Christmas lights, driving right up onto Parliament Hill and under the peace tower, and it was very open and accessible. And then when that bus hijacking took place, restrictions were brought in. And then when, when Corporal Cirillo was, was killed at the Senataf, and then the gunman went into the Hall of Honor to shoot up the Hall of Honor, that precipitated a huge change in security protocols and eliminated the House Security and Senate Security and brought them all under the PPS. And this occupation obviously is going to require us to rethink in collaboration with our partners, how do we better protect the neighborhood and the Parliamentary precinct? And I think councillor McKinney has brought forward a number of very good suggestions that we have to sit down with these partners, whether it's Gatineau, PPS, RCMP, OPS, and the federal government as a whole, to review these measures because we do not want, in the short term or long term, another caravan coming and invading this very important space, I consider the most important street in the country, where it houses our Supreme Court, the Parliament Buildings, and other important national institutions. So I thank the councillor that they brought it forward to us today, and I know councillor Kavanaugh has lots of experience on the Hill and can offer some insight. Councillor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was there for almost thirty years, and working in a whip office, we talked about security all the time, and Parliamentary precinct, it was, it was constantly changing. At one time, they thought it would be everything north of Wellington, and of course, that was ludicrous at the time because it just kept growing, and it's, you know, especially with all the construction and, and changes such as extending to the old train station and making that the senate. So steps have been made forward because of what happened. I remember the day of the bus on the Hill, I was there back in nineteen eighty-nine, and I do remember Cirillo shooting, of course, who could forget it? It was traumatic. So many things need to be moved forward. I appreciate this motion for also mentioning Gatineau and the fact that we are already looking at what they're planning to do for transportation. Obviously, there's a little bit of overlap with the motion that councillor Flurry brought forward that's going to be worked on again because we're talking about transportation, and at some point, we have to talk about security. So, so there'll be issues with that, and I think that's kind of what the point was of this motion too, is to have the federal government be responsible for Wellington Street, which just makes sense because they're, they dominate it and that particular area. And I think it makes sense to have that looked at as under federal jurisdiction. And I appreciate also the emphasis on removing trucks particularly, and also just reducing traffic. So even in the interim, and I'm not saying this is a final, that we should look at removing trucks from that street altogether right away, much like we have on the, the parkways where trucks are not allowed. I don't understand why they're allowed on a street that goes right by Parliament Hill. So I think these are things that we should look at, and I appreciate very much my colleague bringing this motion forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Luloff, who worked on the Hill as well, is next.
Thank you very much, and thank you to councillor McKinney for bringing this forward. I have spoken in this place about the importance of maintaining Wellington Street to have access to everyone. However, it is important to consider this, I believe, and I really do appreciate councillor McKinney bringing this forward. Let's, let's do our homework, let's speak with our federal partners and see what the best solution is for this moving forward. My only suggestion would be, and I don't know if the mover would take it as a friendly amendment, but to truncate the time for the temporary closure until the first meeting of the new council, so that we can look at this again. And it also sets a target for us to, to bring this back and update everyone on the discussions that have been ongoing with the other levels of government. I don't know if the mover would be amenable to that, to the first, the first meeting of, of the new council, so that, you know, with, with fresh eyes, we might be able to take a look at that once more. That's my only suggestion, but I think that this is well considered and something that we should certainly be exploring with our, with our federal partners. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councillor Currie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be voting in favor of this. I do want to say though that this motion makes me very sad. Maybe everyone is a little bit sad about this motion. You know, I hear seniors in Canada will tell me, remember the days we used to take our families and have a picnic outside the library? You know, we used to just go right up to Parliament Hill, and they remember those days fondly as a time where they had a lot of freedom, you know, and that word freedom, that's what some people talk, no, that word freedom people have used so often in this last couple of weeks, and what does it really mean? So now we have restriction, potentially, based on what happens with this review, to, to be closer to those buildings. So, you know, you see that happen so often in life where something happens and then, you know, there's less and less ability to do other things. And so I, I just would be careful when we are talking about this, that we, we lose sight of that, that sometimes our reactions here then go against what we may be trying to do as a society. The other part of this, that I think what hopefully will come out in the review, is that if this occupation were to ever happen again, then it means more trucks would just be in the residential areas. You know, the less close they can get to areas that, you know, they may want to protest. And so I think, but I'm really glad that this is a review, but I think that there will be a lot of really good conversations to come out of this, to what this really means to make this change. I will say that if we look at what they're doing in Paris, at the Champs-Elysees, they're re-envisioning all of Paris to be walkable, more environmentally friendly, and I think there's a lot to be learned from what they're doing there. So I, I just hope that in this review, a lot of really good conversations will come out of it, and I thank councillor McKinney for putting it forward.
Sorry, you just cut off there, councillor. Councillor Mean, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too thank councillor McKinney for bringing this forward, and I will reiterate what councillor Currie said. This is really very, very sad. Our city's changing, the world is changing. Unfortunately, there's always a catalyst, some sort of event that kickstarts change, and often that change is not something that we want to see. But what this event has really done, I think, is to highlight just the gaps in our system, the jurisdictional football that Ottawa is. You saw us appealing to the federal government, appealing to the province, appealing for, you know, for, for somebody to, to take responsibility and stand up and, and, you know, coordinate the efforts to get this occupation ended as quickly as possible. Wellington Street, of course, you know, in hindsight, hindsight is always a wonderful thing, isn't it? We should never have allowed the trucks down on Wellington. That was our, one of our biggest mistakes in this whole mess. So yeah, we are, we have been studying Wellington, the future of Wellington, so this whole thing has to be studied. I, I would just caution about, about doing anything knee-jerk at this point, where this, this whole situation, I think we have to, we have to think about change, but we have to do it very, very carefully and thoughtfully, and, you know, bring all the people together, all the, all the parties at all the levels of government, and, and do this as well as we possibly can, because as Ottawa is the capital city, and we take great pride in looking, knowing that those Parliament Buildings are, are there for us to enjoy and to bring our families in to enjoy, and Wellington Street is part of that. Anything we do is going to have a ripple effect on all kinds of aspects of the downtown core. So while I welcome this motion, I think we have to take it extremely cautious, cautiously, and get this done the right way. Closing it off right now, I would still like to see it opened up at some point. I, I don't want to see it closed off totally. We still have, we have to enjoy our city, and part of that is allowing people to go downtown and enjoy it the way it was. So yeah, I, I will support this motion. But let's not, let's not do, do something knee-jerk at this particular point. Let's be confident that we're going to make the right decisions, and it's going to be part and parcel with, you know, figuring out who's got the jurisdictions for all this area. So I'll just leave it there. But yeah, I'm very sad that, that we've got to have to consider this. But unfortunately, it's been forced upon us, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shantiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be supporting my colleague's motion today. Sad as we all are, I've been in Ottawa for forty-seven years and we've seen the changes, but let's be honest, nine eleven changed the whole world, it turned everything upside down. And unfortunately, everything we do here, we do it after the fact. Everything we do is after the fact. When we have a shoe bomber try to snuggle a bomb in his shoes, we start to take our shoes off at the airport when we have somebody, so we, we've seen all these change happen after the fact, after something really happened. And I can assure you, in the United States, after what took place at the Capitol Hill, you know, things will change forever there as well. So I'm glad this motion, talk about our partners, talk about our other level of government, other services, so they can all work together and come up with some great idea, I hope, so we can all live with. Because again, as sad as we see some of the changes, but, but let's be honest, we were all heartbroken when we saw people dancing on the tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and that area was never secured because always available. We saw people terrified, so our, I'm saying, those things, it changed forever in, in our life and memory, and it is too bad, but it's nothing we can do at this point to back up the clock, but we can look forward to do something with our partner, and hopefully other level of government can agree with us and, and take on that responsibility. But I want to thank councillor McKinney for consulting with most of us on this motion, and I'll be supporting this one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you very much to councillor McKinney for bringing this forward. I, I do want to thank city staff as well, who have been working with us for several days on ensuring a carefully crafted motion that speaks to significant consultation with our partners to ensure that we get this right. Certainly, some of this has been driven by a new awareness around new security needs on Parliament Hill, and I absolutely get that that is, it, it is sad that, you know, that is the world that we're living in. There is also, though, a lot of opportunity to ensure that that space is even better used by the, the millions of visitors that we get to Ottawa every year. How we find the right balance is, is going to be a matter of a lot of discussion, and I, I don't want to diminish the role that city staff have played in helping craft this motion in order to ensure that that appropriate consultation takes place. So with that, thank you very much, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councillor McKinney, there was a request for a friendly amendment by councillor Luloff. Did you wish to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll defer to, to the General Manager of PRED, just in terms of what staff would need in terms of timing, just to make sure.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may offer some advice to council, my advice is that in the spirit of councillor Luloff's suggestion of putting a time limit on the temporary closure so that we can report to the new council on the progress, my, my advice to council is that that report would come to the first meeting of the Transportation Committee of the new council. The inaugural meeting of council is not usually where we would take business like this, and council will just getting itself set up. I think it's good to have the Transportation Committee actually struck and that they actually receive that report. So that's my advice to council on how to approach councillor Luloff's suggestion.
I'm cool with that if you're cool with that, Catherine.
Yeah, I'll take that as a friendly amendment then, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just ask the clerk if she's got a sense of what that friendly amendment is, so we can put it in writing. So just give us a moment, please. So we have it, the underlying section here, subject to review at the beginning of the first Transportation Committee meeting in the new term of council. Councillor McKinney, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I am, thank you.
And councillor Luloff, that captures what you were intending to do?
It certainly does, and thanks to, to the staff for the suggestion and to councillor McKinney for the amendment.
Thank you to Mr. Willis and Miss Salter. On the motion, carried, adoptee?
Carried.
Carried.
Carried. Next is disposition, sorry, was there a dissent?
Yes, dissent. Shirelli.
Next is disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authorities. Motion to adopt reports. Certainly, Mr. Mayor, that the deferred report from the Finance and Economic Development Committee entitled the waiver of real property policy and transfer of previously declared surplus land, Part thirty-three eighty, Jockville Road, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report twenty-four A, the report from Community and Social Services entitled Accountability Agreements with Ontario Health, and the report from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements at City Council Meeting of February ninth, twenty twenty-two, be received and adopted as of then. Carried, adoptee? All right, motions of which notice have been previously given, motion, councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Deans. Please, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll just speak briefly to this. Maybe we can have the motion displayed. This is regarding the, the woods on Hunt Club Road. Excellent, thank you, Mayor. So I introduced this motion at our last council meeting, and this is regarding ten-acre woods or plantation on airport lands under the jurisdiction of the airport on Hunt Club Road. And council may remember that last year, a zoning bylaw amendment application was submitted by Otto's BMW, which is a commercial car dealership on Hunt Club Road that abuts the lands in question, and the application was to develop up to four acres of the ten-acre red pine forest. And as you may expect, this caused significant community opposition to this application. Certainly, there was outreach with members of council at that time. Contrary to the letter that members of council received yesterday from the airport, the land in, in question is not exclusively for recreational use. There are some significant environmental concerns that have been put forward by members of the community. We understand and value urban forests. We understand and value the carbon capture that trees provide our environment, the homes for wildlife habitat, and the water quality that trees and forests provide the nearby Hunt Club Creek. This council, as you know, full well has declared a climate emergency. We have a number of initiatives that reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions. Through our official plan, we talked about the importance of retaining the tree canopy and expanding the tree canopy in the city, and we even have our own tree bylaw. We have demonstrated over and over again the importance of trees in our city, in particular the urban core. Now, this application has generated the last six or eight months significant discussion with the airport officials, with MP David McGinty, with planning staff, with community groups such as Save Hunt Club Woods and others. And the bottom line is, it's inappropriate to facilitate the destruction of an urban forest for a car dealership's needs. Simply put, that, that is the, the genuine concern and statement from the public. They value these woods, they're in public hands, and they should be used for, for public need and public use. So why am I putting forward this motion? Because we have an opportunity to look and facilitate other options. The airport's been clear that they're open to the discussion for a fair and alternate option, if that exists. And by working with the General Manager of Planning, there may be opportunities to examine a land swap in particular. So the motion today is not saying the city's going to buy the land. The motion today does not say we're going to swap land to save these lands. What the motion, part three of this motion says is, we're going to direct staff to do stuff. What the motion, part three of this motion says is, we're going to direct staff to do some research, to take some time to see if there are any viable options that are out there. And the airport's open to that. The airport does have plan for the lands. The airport would like to see the ten acres cut down and developed. But they did tell Councilor Deans and I that they are open to credible viable options. And they're willing to listen to the city if those options exist. So this motion today, Mayor and colleagues, is simply to direct staff to do that work, come back to us, not make any decisions, come back to us with that information. Part two is, let's have a conversation with City of Ottawa's reps on the airport authority to make them aware. There's certainly been a lack of of communication within the city, public outreach from the airport in this regard. And and part one is a suggestion from GM Willis with respect to, again, trying to save these trees. So certainly open to questions and comments, Mayor, but this really is asking staff to do some time, see if there's an opportunity for a swap, and that information will come back before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Okay, yes, yeah, there's ultimately come on town. Any other comments? Councilor Deans?
Thank you. I'm the second round of the motion, and it certainly impacts my board as well. I just wanted to add a few comments to those of Councilor Brockington. First off, I just want to point out that Otto's BMW has recognized the degree of community concern with the loss of this red pine plantation and have decided to look elsewhere for their car storage needs. So it's not necessarily Otto's that would be taking up this land if it were to be clear cut. It would probably be another use. The airport has made it very clear to us that the pandemic has hit them hard and and they 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 have some financial issues that they need to deal with. But they also recognize that the public has really, you know, we're in a climate emergency, and the public don't want this red pine plantation to come down if it can be avoided. So they have made it clear that they are willing to work with the city and work with us to look for alternatives that would be in everyone's interest. This motion just asks council to do that due diligence and look to see if there are reasonable alternatives that we could use to save this red pine plantation. Nick Stowe has made it clear that the plantation needs management. It needs to be thinned out, or it could become dangerous. But there are ways to make it less dangerous or still useful if that work is done. So the motion that Council Brockington and I are putting forward is to look at the options, given the climate emergency, given the degree of concern in the community, before ultimately this is lost for forever to the community. And this this area has been well used by the community. It will be a true loss. So we would just ask you to consider giving us a little bit of time and doing the due diligence. My understanding is that the city staff agree with this approach. And time is of the essence here, because if it is going to be clear cut, it will be done so before the spring. So we need to get on with this now. So we would just ask for your support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried? Next motion is by Councilor Druze, seconded by myself, with respect to the Brownfield Grant Application for one eighty Metcalf Street. Councilor Druze?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where is the council approved the Brownfield Grant Program Application for one eighty Metcalf Street on April fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one? Report AC twenty twenty-one P I E P S four four zero zero four zero. And whereas the recommendation, as approved by council, incorrectly listed to the owner of the subject site as Jadco Inc. And whereas Jadco Inc. is the construction manager for the project, but the legal owner of the subject site is one zero seven zero one five seven two Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation, and one 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 four four seven seven four Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation. And whereas the Brownfield redevelopment grant agreement for the subject site, it has not yet been executed and is pending council's consideration of an amendment to the report previously adopted. And therefore, be it resolved that council approved the amendment recommendation as replacement to those approved as part of Record ACS twenty twenty-one P I E P S zero zero four zero, which have been corrected, were underlined to reflect the ownership of the property. Number one, approve the Brownfield rehabilitation grant application submit by one zero seven zero one five two Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation, and one 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 four four seven seven four Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation, owner of the property at one eighty Metcalf Street for rehabilitation grant under the Brownfield redevelopment community improvement plan program, not to exceed total seven hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars, for which the grant payment period will be phased over a maximum of ten years of development, subject to the establishment of and in accordance with the terms and condition of the Brownfield redevelopment grant agreement.
Great, thank you.
The maximum deferral of, Estella, the maximum deferral of development charges, six hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred eighty-five, under the development charges deferral program and the estimate contribution of one seventy, one hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred fifty-four towards the municipal leadership strategy fund and to delegate delegate authority to to the general manager, planning, infrastructure, and economy development to execute Brownfield's redevelopment grant agreement with construction one zero seven zero one five two Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation, and one 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 four four seven seven four Canada Inc., Jadco Corporation, establishing the term and condition governing the payment of the grant for the redevelopment of one eighty Metcalf Street to the satisfaction of general manager, planning, infrastructure, and economy development department, the city solicitor, and the city treasurer.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Menard?
I think Councilor Fleury had his hand up first, Mayor.
Councilor Fleury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to the mover and then a question to the clerk. So could we identify who this numbered company's soul is? I I thought we we had gone past the numbers game there. And, Mr. Clerk, I I wonder if you could comment, I I believe to have moved, I think it was in the last term of council, an amendment so that we would stop reporting with just numbers and we would automatically attach any procurement or funding program, the soul of businesses that identify as in companies.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to.
Mr. Willis, I think, I think it's Jadco Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can clarify for council, and then the clerk can chime in. Staff made an error in identifying the company in the original staff report. This replicates the approval council has already given. We had identified Jadco Inc. as the owner in the previous thing there, the construction management company. But in their family of companies, it's the same family of companies, company based out of Montreal, I believe, these numbered companies, which are identified in the motion as Jadco Corporation. So Jadco Inc. is not the same as Jadco Corporation. So this tran- changes the approval from Jadco Inc. to the numbered companies that are part of Jadco Corporation. So that's the only change this motion does, is it corrects an error that staff had made in the original staff report. I'm sorry, Mr. City Clerk, if you wish to respond to other aspects of the question.
I just add, Mr. Mayor, that the member was correct, that we do try to provide as much additional information as we can with regards to numbered companies, but Mr. Willis has covered off the rest of that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, Mayor, and I'll be dissenting on this, not because of the staff change. They're doing their job well here, obviously, but I often vote against brownfield grants, and I I figure I should explain it because I I believe this this program needs to be reviewed and altered to ensure that we aren't subsidizing wealthy development corporations who may have undertaken this work without this grant. In Ottawa, brownfield developments often receive not just a a fifty percent grant, but also rezonings. And so, you know, this was two thousand and, you know, seven and previous policy. And I think we need to to fully review the program. And just to quote a Joanne Canelo article, she writes, since the brownfields policy came into effect in two thousand and seven, councillors have approved more than seventy million worth of grants for about thirty-five projects, usually with little or no discussion. And that was, of course, written in two thousand and seventeen. And so it's not clear whether the grants are are subsidizing something that would have happened anyway without without the subsidy. And so I'll I'll continue to dissent on brownfield grants until we can get a full review of the program and and look to stop subsidizing projects that may have happened in any event. So I just wanted to explain my dissent to councillors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is, the change is the one that's underlined in the motion. So on the motion, carried, dissent, Councilor Menard?
Carried.
A motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, Councilor Moffett and Elshantiri, with respect to a minor variance application of eleven sixty-six Highcroft Drive, on suspension, carried?
Carried.
Councilor Moffett, please.
I thank you. I'll just, it's just a minor thing. It was something that was missed in the zoning bylaw amendment. So because we don't allow a minor variance within two years of approval of a zoning bylaw amendment, we have to get permission for the applicant to go before the Canadian adjustment to address the minor error in the zoning bylaw. So whereas the report that includes the zoning bylaw amendment for eleven sixty-four, eleven sixty-six Highcroft Drive was approved by council on March first, two thousand and twenty-one, to allow for the development of planned unit development, whereas the requirement in Table sixty-five of the zoning bylaw for permitted projections such as steps is no closer than zero point six meters to the front law line. And whereas the approved site plan showed the permitted projection at the property line with a zero setback. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment approved by council did not reflect the reduced setback as per the site plan. And whereas the standard way to resolve the issue would be an application for minor variance to the Canadian adjustment. And whereas Section forty-five, one point three of the Planning Act does not permit an application for minor variance before the second anniversary of the initial zoning amendment. And whereas Section forty-five, one point four of the Planning Act permits council to declare by resolution that such an application would be permitted, therefore be it resolved that council permit an application to the Canadian adjustment for a minor variance with respect to requirements in the zoning bylaw for permitted projections in the front yard for the planned unit development on Highcroft in Manetick.
Councilor Leeper, please.
Thanks. I'm just wondering, you know, clearly, this is two feet of difference that wasn't captured in the zoning. Why would we make them go to the committee of adjustment if it was the intent to approve this, rather than simply accomplish this by way of of modifying the zoning on council's authority?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Timmerk.
Mr. Mayor, that would require the formal rezoning process, so there'd have to be a public meeting, an application, a public meeting, and a zoning amendment. Going to the committee of adjustment is typically more expeditious than going through a a formal rezoning, is true.
So, you know, it's it's, excuse me, two feet. Does council not have the prerogative to to modify zoning without asking for a full application?
No, you could do it, but you'd still have to have a public, a report, notice, a public meeting, and and a bylaw, and of course, the appeal period thereafter, even for an amendment such as that.
Okay, all right, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you. On the motion, adopt a carried?
Carried.
The next motion requiring suspension of the rules is commemorative naming Cameron, excuse me, Cameron Highlander Plaza. On suspension, carried? Councilor Shirelli, seconded by Councilor Harder. Councilor Shirelli, please.
Okay, thank you. It's move on by myself, seconded by Councilor Harder. That whereas on July twenty-fourth, two thousand and two, city council approved, as amended, the commemorative naming policy. And whereas, in keeping with its power set out in the Miss Black, two thousand and one, council may assign a commemorative name by resolution, notwithstanding the provisions included in the commemorative naming policy. And whereas the Cameron Highlanders of Ottawa, Duke of Edinburgh's Own, has long historical significance to the community with roots dating back to eighteen sixty-two. Whereas the regiment is a reserve infantry unit within the Canadian Armed Forces that trains soldiers and also provides ceremonial guards of honor for visiting dignitaries and for national ceremonies and events. And whereas the regiment has long distinguished association with Ottawa and surrounding communities that has provided its citizens soldiers to serve in both peace and war. Whereas the regiment has been called upon to provide soldiers to assist the community in times of need, including the ice storm of nineteen ninety-eight and the Ottawa floods of two thousand and seventeen and nineteen, and more recently, volunteering in long-term care homes during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the Ontario government is committing more than a hundred thousand dollars in capital funding to support the construction of a new commemorative naming plaza honoring the service of the regiment through Canada's history. Therefore, be it resolved that the right-of-way parcel located between Robertson Road and Northside Road be named Cameron Highlander Plaza. And be it further resolved that an appropriate stand and plaque be installed, displaying the name and including a brief history of the regiment's contribution. And be it further resolved that all costs related to the production installation of the stand plaque and subsequent event will be funded through the Bell's Corners BIA. And I just want to point out, the Cameron Highlanders started in Bell's Corners. So it was determined by the BIA a couple of years ago that celebrating them at the entrance to Bell's Corners is something that would be very significant, and a lot of work has been done getting cooperation from people like the Museum of War and the Cameron Highlanders themselves. And we have this money coming in from the government as long as we get this motion through by the end of March. And we'd like to secure that money as soon as we can and get to work on on this project.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, there's ultimately come on town. Any other comments on the motion, carried, adopt a? Next motion requiring suspension of the rules is by Councilor Deans, seconded by Councilor Kavanaugh, with respect to International Women's Day. On suspension, carried?
Carried.
Councilor Deans?
Thank you. Whereas in nineteen ten, women delegates from around the world met in Copenhagen to propose that Women's Day become an international event to promote equal rights for women. And whereas the first International Women's Day was held in nineteen eleven with the support of over a million people. And whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, the General Assembly of the United Nations officially called for all countries to mark a day for the recognition of women's economic, political, and social achievements. And whereas we are witnessing a significant rise in women's activism to accelerate women's equality, along with a deepening resolve to reject gen- to reject gender discrimination in all of its forms. And whereas every year, thousands of events are held around the world to inspire, celebrate, and honor women. Therefore, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two to be International Women's Day in the city of Ottawa. And I'll just offer, Mr. Mayor, that this year's theme for International Women's Day is breaking the bias. I think we can all agree that there's a lot of work to be done to break the bias, so I hope you'll support this resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank my colleagues for moving this motion. And I appreciate the fact that many of us are holding events, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, with your breakfast. And I appreciate that, that that is an invitation that's just going out now, as well as I'll be having an event in my own ward with some amazing women who can tell us about what they've done and in terms of breaking barriers. And I appreciate all the good work of my my colleagues in in promoting equity and the fact that the city is working on gender equity and making it a priority. And we have excellent staff to do that. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Councilor Kavanaugh, for co-hosting the breakfast here on March eighth. And very pleased to announce that the Right Honourable Miquel Jean will be our guest of honor. So I hope members of council and the public can attend that event. And on the motion, carried, adopted? Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules procedure? Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. We do, I believe, have that, a notice of motion, Councilor Fleury. We have that recorded, Madam Clerk. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion. Conseilier Cloutier, puis par conseiller Kett, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire, que les règlements énumérés alors...
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried, adoptee? A confirmation bylaw, règlement d'abord. Question, conseiller Fleury, conseillère Kit, s'il vous plaît.
Counselor Fleury, Cloutier, rather, and Kit?
...to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of February 23, 2020.
Carried, adoptee? Clerk tells me there's no written queries. Counselor Cloutier, please, adjournment, seconded by Counselor Kit.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of February 23, 2022 be adjourned.
Carried, adoptee? The media availability will begin at 1:45 PM. On va commencer la conférence de presse deux heures moins quinze. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.